All notices have been appropriately made public and noticed in the appropriate fashion according to the OPMA. Ms. Chairman, all of yours.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bresi.
Here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Marzo.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Mr. Riker. Ms. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Tremer.
Here.
Mr. Weingart. Mr. Wall.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Here.
A motion for payment of voucher for recording secretary, please.
So moved Sullivan.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bresi.
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Riker, oh, sorry, he's not here, Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Tremer.
Yes.
Mr. Weingart. Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes, we'll take a motion for approval of the December 2nd regular meeting minutes, please.
Motion Heller.
Second Sullivan.
We'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bernstein.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Wall.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes, we have any engineering or planning matters, gentlemen? Okay, that's, that will help. All right, any resolutions?
None at this time.
All right, any legal matters?
None at this time.
Any changes to the agenda, schedule? How nice. We do have a master plan report from Mr. Marzo, please.
Good evening, the master plan is 90% complete. We are still waiting on the required affordable housing portion, which we expect shortly. We'll continue to update you as things develop, thank you.
Thank you, okay, that's it.
What do we got first?
We have Mr. Shemanowitz, welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Ron Shemanowitz on behalf of the applicant HW Jackson LLC. We're back before you tonight seeking preliminary final site plan approval. We were last before you in June of this year. At that point, there was some recommendations for revised plans. We have done that in September, we submitted revised plans, we have new review letters. And we are prepared to describe to the board what changes have been made to the plan.
Great, happy to have you back. And your first witness?
Our first witness is Mr. Walt Hopkins, who's to my left, and he was previously sworn and qualified in this matter. I'm going to turn it over to-
He gets to be sworn again, but we'll, we'll accept his qualifications.
Please.
All right, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last with a record.
Sure, Walter Hopkin, H.O.P.K.I.N.
Walt, I'm going to turn it over to you. I think the most important thing for the board is to summarize what's changed in the plan since we were last here in, in June. And there were a couple of cleanup items, I would call them, as well.
Sure, um, just waiting to get our application. So we're, we're at Jackson, HW Jackson. This was, I don't know if church wrote. So I, I think this might be the wrong application.
Lots five, lots five, lot two six oh three, lots five and 22?
Yes, ma'am. There we go, Jackson. So maybe the, the rendering, the top file, please?
Walt, this is a new exhibit, correct?
Yes, it is, it's a color rendered version of our site plan submitted to the board. Last revised September 4th, 2024.
And I believe we're up to exhibit A3, so that, that would be exhibit A3.
So we, as a result of the last meeting, the board had some suggestions and strong opinions about the architectural elements as well as fire access. So we, we took those suggestions, we met with your professionals, and we've come up with the plan that you see before you. The two buildings in the front remain essentially the same, and what we did in the rear was consolidate what was three buildings into one building back to back.
I, I don't mean to cut you off, you're testifying as an engineer and a planner, or just the engineer?
Yes, as both an engineer and a planner.
And a planner?
Yeah. So that, those three buildings were consolidated into one back to back, full circulation was provided around that building in the rear. There was an emergency access that's been extended out to Right-Dee Bow Road with a grass paver as requested previously. We were able, with this layout, to pick up a few more parking spaces scattered throughout the site. As the board may recall, there was, there's, there's parking in front of each unit. But previously, there was 15 parking spaces scattered throughout the site, we've been able to increase that to 28. And we do comply with your ordinance. This resulted in an increase in both impervious and building coverage. However, we're well under what's required by your ordinance, so no relief is required. There were other updates, technical issues as far as lighting, we addressed those comments as well. Architecturally, maybe if we could switch to that, the architect is out of state, so I'm going to describe to the board what, what was done. So maybe, I think there was an architectural rendering, may have been the third file.
I think it might be part of that file, but the last sheet. You scroll up.
There we go.
Yeah, and Walt, just keep the record clear, this is part of the plan set that was submitted, correct?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so we'll, we'll not mark this, this is previously submitted.
So the, the color palette has been updated to a more modern set of colors. Both the siding, excuse me, all the siding, the split face block, the overhead door and the window trim has all been updated as far as color. The height of the block has been also raised to the top of the windows. There were also four windows that were added to, there is one building that backs up to West Commodore Boulevard. So there were four windows that were provided to, to soften that as well. And the buildings will all be solar ready as well. I also have in my notes, it may have been a question that was raised, the architect, about exterior mechanicals. And I'm able to confirm that there's no exterior mechanicals proposed with these applicants, with these units. Those are the, the changes that we've made, I don't know if you want me to, to stop there, see if there's any questions.
Let's, let's see if anyone on the board has questions. Mr. Tremer, I think it was you who showed a good deal of interest in the circulation.
I can, I have reduced versions, if that would make it easier, the rendering. Does anybody else need?
Sure, we'll take them.
Okay. See, with that, I'm going to wrap Christmas gifts with them, so.
We can share, we can share. Do you have Building A frontage architecturals? I think we might like to see that. We're good, thank you. We had this in simple black and white, but it's so much nicer in color. There's a secondary egress out the back on Rights, Right-Dee Bow Road.
This is much better.
That's what you were looking for?
Yeah, this way, we, there's secondary, just in case.
Put it on, put it on the record here, please, Mr. Tremer.
Yeah, it's good to have a secondary egress, just in case there's an incident in the front, gives secondary access. And you could also have two incidents at one time, and it gives access too, so that's great.
That was okay.
Yeah, we don't have any.
Yes, especially in a project of this size.
Yes.
I think that was a very good suggestion, and it will make the fire department very happy. So I'm, I'm looking at these renderings, and of course, the, the big building, the main building, is stunning. I, I mean, it's really beautiful. The other one, I'm not so thrilled with this one. It doesn't go with the other, with the, what is it, Building C, which is exceptional. This one.
Just so we understand your comment, is it?
Sort of.
Which, which building are you concerned about?
The one facing West Commodore Boulevard.
So that's Building A, if I have that correct?
Yes.
And that's this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Rather austere. Don't, don't you think, Mr. Wall, compared?
Quite austere.
I, I'd hate to use the word boring, but I will. Could, could we spice it up a little bit there? Because it's right on our main road, that's, that's our main street through town. And it, it has zero character.
So I, a couple of things, of course, the answer is yes, we can do something. Not being an architect, I'm, I'm not sure what to offer. I will also just comment that we do have landscaping, that your professionals have asked us to beef up as well, so that will help break it up. But I can offer to work that out with your professionals between the architect.
I, I have all the faith in the world with our professionals and their good taste. But this building lacks any kind of character. And it's going on a road that is heavily traversed.
I understand.
Anyone else with something, Mr. Tremer?
Are Buildings A and B already existing, or are you doing them too?
A and B are proposed, yes.
I'm sorry, second?
Both Buildings A and B are proposed.
They're proposed, they're not built yet.
Correct.
Do you think we can do some rear access to them too?
It, it's possible, and, and here's my conflict, both of those, right, so we have a little bit of a conflict. So for Building A, we want to spice it up, but then provide some sort of a access to the rear that may conflict with that. Same thing with Building B, we kind of have a narrow strip between Building B and the, the property line there.
Well, I mean, as a matter of compromise, how about just grass pavers, so this way they have to get back there they can?
I, I've never fought a fire, but I just would remind you that these are also suppressed. My client is kicking me from behind under the table and saying, please agree to the man.
Nice job.
So grass pavers, if that's acceptable.
Again, just as long as we can show we have access, we're good.
Okay, thank you.
That would be great, appreciate it, thank you. You know, I, I can understand having a building that is not visible from the road being modest. But something that is facing the road really needs to have some character. And I, I have faith in our professionals that they'll work with you to get something more palatable for the community. Thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board? How about the professionals, what do we have, gentlemen?
Just quickly, I'll agree with the applicant, they have revised the plan in accordance with the, the board's comments. We do have an emergency access to Right, Right-Dee Bow, there is a little bit of increase in square footage, but parking complies, there's no variances. So it's a, it's a pretty clean application. The only question I would have regarding the septic systems that are proposed. This is adjacent to a wetland area, and I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration given to the high water table elevation that usually is associated with wetland areas.
So, so typically, we do submit for those as a condition of approval. I can tell you, our office does a lot of septic designs, and we're very confident that we can get, where they're shown, we can, they're feasible and they will work.
Okay, thank, and the other comment was, have we done a cut fill analysis?
We did a rough one, I don't know that I have the numbers with me, but there will be import.
Okay, if the export is more than 1,000 cubic yards, then a soil removal permit is required. It can be handled through resolution compliance, but just so the applicant knows, that'll be an outside condition or an outside approval that he'll be required to get if his soil removal exceeds 1,000.
Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Hopkin. At the last hearing, did we hear testimony regarding a variance for sign height?
I'm not sure if I did, but I'm glad you're bringing it up, I just want to reiterate that we-
That's why the chairperson keeps me awake.
Yeah, there's, there, I think there's a typo in the plan that may not have been corrected, if it wasn't, it will be, we are not seeking assigned variance.
Perfect.
That detail will be revised.
Good.
The only other comment from our, our report, can you talk about solid waste storage dumpsters for the site?
So we, we may have touched on that the last time, so the applicant operates another similar facility in Lakewood. And what they do there, they'll do here as well, where each tenant will have their own small, for lack of a better term, dumpster rolling container that they keep inside of their building. And on a designated day, they will roll it out, and a private hauler will, will remove it, and then it goes back into the building.
Okay, so my, my question to the applicant and to the board, do we need to have that? A, in the resolution, and B, do we need to go to the level of having it as something in the form of a deed, something that goes with the leases? My concern simply is, Mr. Shea decides to run a shredding business out of one of the units, and says, screw it, puts a three-yard dumpster on the other side of the parking lot next to a dead tree. And now we've got a code enforcement issue. So while I'm, I'm sure the applicant, and I'm familiar with the applicant's work, we'll take care of it. Our job is to make sure that we, we do the best job we can when we turn this over to the township employees who have to manage it out in the field. And so the inclusion of dumpsters inside the building is a great solution to not having them outside the building. But do we need to have that next level of-
As a condition?
Protection.
And we have no objection to such a condition in the resolution, and that we consent that there'd be a provision in our tenant leases that would require the same.
Ah, memorializing something is always a good idea, so.
Agreed.
It doesn't exist if it isn't in writing, my husband taught me that.
I appreciate that response, that's all I have, Madam Chair.
I also read CME's Tree, you got this?
We did, and it-
I read it this afternoon and in the parking lot. I read it this afternoon and in the parking lot, but it's important, so, and there were quite a number of conditions.
We, we would agree to comply with all of those. We will meet with Ms. Spiro's office and make sure that everything's addressed.
Great, excellent, thank you. Anything else from the board? Anything else from you?
Nothing further from us.
How lovely. Moving right along, let's open this to the public, please. If anyone has any questions to ask of this applicant, please come forward.
I move to close the cross-examination portion of the testimony.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, if anyone has anything at all to say about this project from the audience, please come forward.
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Would you like to conclude?
Just very, very briefly, pretty simple application. We appreciate all the board's comments. Back in June, we worked through, I think quite favorably, all those comments and come up with a, came up with a much better plan for, for the community. So, we're, we're happy where we ended on this, and we hope the board will grant this approval.
Thank you. All right, we'll seek a motion on this.
I'll make a motion. I mean, the attorney just stated how they actually listened to all the comments, you have professionals in the board, the changes they made, I think really came through with everything we asked for, I think it was a very clean application, especially with the circulation, I make a motion to approve.
I second that motion. Sullivan.
We'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bressey?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Tremer?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Kim?
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
We have 15 Leesville Road. Ms. Jennings? Ms. Jennings, that went quickly, the last one, didn't it?
Yes.
Surprised. We're moving them right along. Good evening.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Lenz Goldman &amp; Spitzer. On behalf of the applicant, as the board is aware, the applicant is here this evening seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval to construct a three-story, approximately 115,000 square foot office building with related site improvements on property located at 15 Leesville Road and identified as Block 12001, Lot 1.01. The property is approximately 10.8 acres and located in the neighborhood commercial zone where professional and business offices are permitted uses. The office building will be located entirely on Lot 1.01. However, the applicant proposes to connect to an existing access driveway from Leesville Road crossing over a portion of Lot 1.02. Lot 1.02 is currently developed with a Quick Check, Amian Store, and Gas Station. Both lots are subject to a reciprocal cross-access easement that permits ingress and egress over the portion of Lot 1.02 that will be developed with the access driveway. In addition to site plan approval, the applicant requires a bulk variance with respect to the maximum permitted height and feet of the office building. The applicant further requires design waivers, including, among other things, maximum ground sign area, maximum number of wall signs, and minimum loading space size. The testimonial shows the applicant satisfies both the positive and the negative criteria, and Graham will get into those specifics with that. In support of the application, we will rely on the testimony of Graham McFarlane, the engineer and planner sitting to my left, Naftali Gutt, the architect, and John Ray, our traffic engineer. We'd just like to make sure that the record is complete, so we only have five review letters, one from the board engineer dated November 11th, one from the board planner dated December 11th, fire prevention dated May 29th, police traffic safety July 9th, and tree specialist November 11th. I believe that's all the review letters we have. With that, if we can have Mr. McFarlane sworn in, we can begin.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last of the record, because we have no idea who you are.
Sure, it's Graham McFarlane, M-A-C-F-A-R-L-A-N-E, professional engineer, professional planner, previously qualified and testified before this board.
Are you testifying as both engineer and planner?
Yes.
Does the board accept the credentials?
There's a question?
Thank you very much.
Okay, if you could, Graham, just describe the site and the area around the site, and if you're going to rely on any exhibits, let's just identify them for the record, please.
Yes, you can see that we have Exhibit A1 up on the screen, which is an aerial of the subject property, also has the, the proposed development on the property in, in the, in the yellow. You can see the, the subject site is located on Leesville Road. It, it contains about 10.8 acres located in the NC, the neighborhood commercial zone. The proposal is to build a three-story office building of about 115,000 square feet with the corresponding parking spaces and other site improvements. I think we have 582 parking spaces, which is in accordance with ordinance requirements. You can see that the site sits, sits kind of behind the Quick Check, which is at the corner of, of Leesville Road.
Excuse me, do you have a pointer?
I do.
It would make our lives easier, thank you.
So, you can see the subject building. You can see, obviously, the, the parking spaces around, around the site. You can see the Quick Check, the other plaza. We're, of course, sitting right over here in, in Town Hall tonight as we, as we speak. The, Ms. Jennings spoke about the cross-access easement that exists between the Quick Check property and between the subject property, which is located right here where the existing driveway is to the Quick Check. That driveway ends right about, you know, right about there, right now, so of course, that will be extended to service the, the new building. We do have some minor improvements proposed to Leesville Road, and Mr. Ray will talk about that in, in some more detail, but basically, we have some restriping proposed to, to Leesville Road, and I think some re-timing of the, of the traffic signal. So, there are no other major improvements that are required to support this application, but again, Mr. Ray will talk about some of those, some of those details a little more. Anthony, go to A2 for me. A2, you can see is the, the site plan sheet that was submitted in support of the application. Again, it shows the, the single building of three-story of about 115,000 square feet with the arrangement of parking and access, access drives that are proposed. The Quick Check sits, sits right down here. Again, the existing driveway that serves the Quick Check is, is right in here. That will be extended to service the site, to provide access for the building and to all of the, of the parking areas. We did add, in the, the last round of submissions that we made just a couple of weeks ago, we had decided to add a second connection here for this upper parking area. That was not part of the original design that we had come up with, but when we spoke to our client about it, a couple of times, they felt that, we felt it was important to add this, this second access point for the driveway that does align with the existing Quick Check driveway. A3 next, Anthony? A3 is just the, the landscape plan that was submitted in support of the application. You can see that this application includes a series of what we call rain gardens or slash bio-retention bases, which are all going to be planted, similar to what you see here where I am, where I'm showing with the, with the pointer. Those rain gardens or bio-retention facilities will have water-tolerant species in them. They'll comply with the green infrastructure standards, so based upon the new standards, we can only have a maximum drainage area of two and a half acres, so we end up having, having to provide several different, several systems throughout the site, so we have them scattered throughout the site, one up in the front, two over on, on the top side, one down on the bottom side, and then we have a larger, larger detention basin down at the, down at the bottom end of the, of the project. And we also do have underground recharge proposed to accommodate the rooftop runoff from, from the building directly.
Mr. McFarlane?
Directly itself.
Are you using a rain garden style there?
Yes, we are.
That's great. We're, we're, you know, working on the master plan, and that's one of our recommendations, is that these retention basins be more environmentally attractive, and the rain gardens are a great way to do it, so thank you very much.
I agree, especially, especially on a site like this where there are a lot of parking spaces, and we can use that to try to break up and, and to try to provide some green spaces in, in the middle, middle of the project and soften, soften the overall, overall view. Mr. Peters did, did comment about the need to provide a buffers along for, for the property. There is one condition at the very rear end of the property where a buffer is required, 35-foot buffer required by ordinance. Most of that property is actually occupied by, by the category one buffer that sits on a property, but there is a, a small portion of it that is outside of the category one buffer.
Could you point out where that is? I'm sorry.
Yeah, maybe go back, go back to A2, A2 for me, please. It's this little piece back here. You can see right here is a limit of the category one buffer. The property line sits right here. The property that sits, which is Lot 37 over here to the right, that property is owned residential, so technically, your ordinance would require a 35-foot buffer along that rear property line. Most of that is already consumed by the 300-foot riparian buffer, so again, technically, your ordinance does require a little, little piece of buffer right, right where I'm pointing. So, we will comply and provide that 35-foot buffer in that small portion of the property. That's the only part that's affected by the, by the buffer requirements. The rest of the property is, is surrounded by other commercially zoned properties, so, so the buffer requirements do not, do not, do not apply. There are two variances requested with the application. One is for the, the site identification sign, which is right there. The sign does meet the setback requirements of 20, 25 feet. However, we are proposing a sign larger in size than what ordinance requires. We're proposing a sign of 72 square feet, really for, for two or, two or three reasons. One, the size of the building is 115,000 square feet with possibly, possibly, you know, 60 tenants or so. This property is much larger than a minimum property size required by the ordinance. This property is 10 acres, greatly exceeds the ordinance requirement of, I think it's 20,000, you know, 20,000, 20,000 square feet, and this property's frontage is much greater than is permitted by ordinance. So, this property could, could have been subdivided and provide additional lots would result in additional signage as another option. So, for those reasons, I believe it's, it's justified to seek that variance for, for providing one sign of 72 square feet to improve public safety, provide easy identification for the building, so we are asking for that, that relief. This proposed building is higher than is permitted by ordinance. Ordinance has a building height limitation of 35 feet. We're proposing a building height of 30, I think it's 38 feet, five and, you know, five and seven eighths inches or something like that, so just a hair below the, just a hair below the 38 feet six inches. The architect will provide some specific testimony as to how that benefits the, the actual building design and why it is advantageous, but just for clarity, we are seeking that, and then I will come back and, I guess I'll sum up with the, with the proofs as to how that meets the positive and the negative criteria.
May I, may I ask a question before you do that? Mr. Tremer, we have no problem with that as far as our equipment is concerned?
Sorry. No, we have equipment that's capable of making that roof.
Okay. That, when I read through this, that was the single thing that concerned me the most, was the availability of proper equipment.
Right.
Don't get me wrong, it's tight.
It's tight, yeah. That's what I figured.
Again, they're shoehorning a big building into a little spot.
Well, 10 acres, not exactly a little spot, but, but you may be correct there.
Well, I guess a better way, they're making parking for a lot of people, which is creating a bit of a hazard.
We'll look into that, then.
Yes, please.
Yeah, but for the record, I think it's important to note, the maximum building coverage is 25%. We're at 9.10%, and the maximum impervious coverage is 60%, and we're at 53.7%, so we have not maximized usable site here.
What you do with height?
We're talking about height, not, not width. All right, thank you, Mr. McFarlane.
Yes, and since we were, were touching on the, the fire access, just, just very, very quick, you can see that the site does have access from Leesville Road. There is full circulation around the building. The plan was submitted for the, for the Fire Bureau, and we do have their, their review letter. In, in response to some, some other comments and thinking about the application, I also think that we, we should add, which we don't have on the plan right now, I think we should add a cross-access easement to the adjoining property. I think that would be good for emergency purposes. I think I would propose that cross-access easement right here where this driveway continues to align, you know, to join with, this plan currently shows what's approved on the adjoining site is at the, you know, school complex, so I think that we would just provide a cross-access easement from the end of our parking lot to that property line, and then, you know, hopefully, the same happens on, on the other property, and there would be access between the two properties.
Well, we'd not make that a condition of the approval, because we have no idea what the adjoining property owner would permit, so I would, I would.
Well, we can.
We can leave it open on our end.
We'll provide it on our property.
If it be included as a consideration, consideration might be the better.
Because that already has an approval on it, so.
Correct. But they may be making changes, just saying.
We're not, we're not doing any construction on their physical premises, right?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure.
Be an easement.
We also have, we have one waiver that is requested, which is the width of the loading zone. We have a loading zone back here to accommodate delivery vehicles, box trucks, you know, small vehicles, whatnot. We have it 11 feet wide right now by 190 feet long. Your ordinance required a loading zone of something like 12 by 35 or 12 by 40 feet, something, something like that, but we have it 11 feet wide, and I would stipulate that that, that is perfectly suitable and will work just as fine as a, as a 12-foot wide loading area, so we're asking for that, that particular waiver. Mr. Peters also pointed out, we do have a string of parking lots up here, or parking spaces up here on the top, which we do have 53 parking spaces without an island breaking them up. Ordinance recommends 50, so we will put an island in there to break that, to break that up, so there's no more than 50. I'll basically split that in half. We might lose one or two parking spaces, but that doesn't have any impact, as we have plenty of parking.
How about many, maybe EV stations back there, which would give you some places, right?
Anthony, if you could zoom in on the building for me? If you could pan down, so we get the, get the building. We have, I know that we, we always like to put the EV spaces close to the building, because it saves on the cost of the install, but I see one guy shaking his head, and I know another guy over here shaking his head, and the fire guys always tell us they want them not so close to the building. Which is something that we've learned.
You're sort of shaking your head.
Right. He's shaking one way.
You know where that's going, right?
That's something we've learned from.
Might cost you a little more, but get away from the building.
Right, that's something we've learned from submitting plans to the fire guys. They all want them not so close to the building.
And when they both agree with each other, then you definitely know that you need to move the EV spaces.
Right, well, on this plan, we have them down here on the outside, so they're not right up against the building.
Except for the handicap accessible has to be close to the building.
Correct, except where the one or two are required for the handicap space. Anyway, the string of EV spaces we have is down here right now, not up against the building, so we're learning a little bit.
Good spot.
So that's where we put them.
I was just thinking of you could save yourself some spaces and break it up a little back there, but whatever you decide is fine.
We do have about 20 more spaces than are required by ordinance, so we're already okay, so losing two or three is not going to have any impact. Mr. Peters pointed out two other items which deal with landscape buffers and are actually screening. Your ordinance technically requires screening alongside and rear property lines, so screening would be required here where we have, we have this rain garden proposed, which is 21 feet wide. That will be filled with landscaping, so we asked for that waiver. Technically, we're not meeting what the ordinance says you're supposed to provide, but we do have a 21-foot wide buffer with significant amount of landscaping in there, so I think that meets the intent of the ordinance. Anthony, if you can pan down for me? And what I'm going to refer to as the top of the site that adjoins the school site that's been approved, this property line has a drainage easement. The county has a pipe that runs from Leeds Road back to the Tombs River, there's an outfall there. So there's a 10-foot wide drainage easement that occupies our property and we have the curb line 20 feet from that 10-foot easement. Within that 20 feet right now, we just have a string of shade trees planted, but we'll agree to supplement that shade trees with some shrubbery or lower level planting. So again, that may not meet the exact letter of the law of the ordinance, so I guess technically we're going to ask for that waiver as well. We do have architectural renders. I'll go through them very, I'll just, Anthony, just put up A four for me and then I'll let the architect speak about the other details of the architectural plan. So this is just an architectural 3D rendering of the building. You can see the unique shape of the building that provides some interest. You can see the main, you know, the main drive aisle and then, you know, the field of, a field of parking. Just for orientation, a quick check would be, a quick check would be that corner right there and then the next retail professional plaza right behind the quick check there. But anyway, three-story building with, you know, very nice architectural design and treatments with the, which the architect will provide some additional discussion about. The letters from the professionals, I think I went through most of the comments that Mr. Peters had. They related to, of course, the building height variance, the waivers that we're requesting, which I did discuss. Just for clarification, the uses are business and professional office, which are permitted in the NC zone. I talked about the landscaping strips and I think that addresses Mr. Peters' letter. And we have a letter from Mr. Klee dated November 11th. Of course, he has a series of comments outlining the project. I spoke about the loading area. We didn't talk about sidewalk along Leeds Road. There is curb and sidewalk for almost the entirety of the site. There is a small piece at the west end that does not have curb and sidewalk and we'll agree to extend that curb and sidewalk, so we have it fully along the site frontage. The soil import-export will have to comply with the permit requirement, the ground sign I did speak about, and then a series of technical comments, which we will agree to address all of those. And we have a letter from the Tree Expert, November 11th. I have looked at that and we will agree to address all those comments and work that out with Shari. And we have a letter from the Fire Bureau dated May 29th of 2024. They talk about the needs for suppression system, which we comply with. They just talk about fire hydrants meeting JTMU spec, trust signers notations, moving EV stations away from the building. Originally, we had them closer, we had moved them, addressing signage, fire markings, and that's pretty much it, so we'll agree to address those comments. And that's all the outside agency comments that I have seen. So that is all I have for right now.
It's a mighty big roof.
It'd be great for solar.
Wouldn't it?
I agree.
Could be a lot of electricity.
I'm certain it will be, I'm certain it will be solar ready.
And it'll probably be drone landing portion ready as well, so. Good, thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Trummer?
The roadway going around the building, you have vehicles parking on both sides. What is the width of that roadway?
Mr. Trummer, if you could speak into the microphone, then we can pick it up on the record.
I didn't hear the question.
I'm sorry. The roadway going around the building, what is the width of the roadway between the parked cars because you have parking on both sides?
Anthony, could you go to A two for us? So what we have is the, this driveway in front of the building, we have that 30 feet wide, so a little larger than is permitted. Everywhere else, it's 24 foot wide, which meets ordinance requirements. So it's 24 feet wide here, 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 and we do have a 30 feet wide in front of the building.
Yeah, just so you know, the one ladder truck that we have in this town, needs 19 feet, three inches at the bare minimum to put their jacks down.
Okay.
So you will not be able to get any other vehicles around that once that ladder is in place.
Right, but the way that this site is designed, I mean, if the ladder wasn't here, for example, you know, any cars can get out here and here and if we're fortunate enough to get the emergency access easement here to the adjoining property, we have that as a way in and out of the property under emergency condition as well. So I think the way that this property is designed and also we have the secondary point of egress here out to the main driveway, so you have a point to the main egress here, you have a point from here, you know, wherever a blockage is, you have another way out from, into and out of this site.
Yeah, but my concern is if you, so on a large-scale building like this, you have the ladder each corner, unless if it's a night, you put the ladders up, they have beacons on them, so the firefighters can see where they're going, where the ends are in case of emergency. You put a ladder on each end, you now have just taken access out of the whole building because it's only 24 foot instead of 30 foot wide. I don't know how the board feels about that, but I just figured I would point that out as a point of interest. You're going to be using the quick check driveway as your ingress and egress, correct?
Correct.
You don't think that's going to get a little tight?
Mr. Ray is going to provide specific testimony about the traffic and the levels of service and those kinds of questions.
I was going to build off what you said, though. Is there a possibility you can put a secondary ingress/egress on the exact opposite corner going out to Leesville?
Well, again, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Mr. Ray to answer those questions because we did look at that and talk about that. I know he's going to tell you that that's too close to this driveway to work suitably, but that was thought about when this project was planned.
I liked where you were going with it, it just moved it up a little bit.
We did think about it when the project was planned, but at the end of the day, there's not enough frontage to have two driveways work suitably, so.
You said there's going to be 60 tenants.
Well, it could, I mean, it could be up to 60 tenants. We don't know the number yet.
Do you have any idea the rough number of employees that will be there?
I don't have that number.
Okay. So there's, I'm curious because I'm going to get into the whole septic part of it because I don't even see where that is.
Well, this has public sewer. We're proposing public sewer.
Okay. That was my question.
And that's going to be its own, that's its own challenge, but this application is based upon providing public sewer service.
Okay, very good. Yeah, because I know there's a lot of wetlands and other issues you have back there.
Well, the sewer is planned right now to go out of this project into the adjoining project, then up to the pump station over here behind the high school. And we've talked to the, we've been talking to the MWA about that. There are some things to be taken care of, but that's the.
Good luck with that.
That's the plan right now. That's going to take some doing.
Okay, thank you.
Right, and just regarding, just following up on the employees in the building, so you would be obviously restricted to the IBC requirements for, you know, whatever code is for the number of people in the building.
Yes, and I mean, the architect would probably give you more information on that if you.
Right, also along with the amount of parking space you have in the property.
Correct.
You'd have to be able to exceed.
Correct.
Anyone else from the board?
Yes.
Mr. Marza?
I'm just looking at the utility plan and, I'm sorry, the storm drainage plan and there is a septic noted behind the quick check, but is that for quick check?
Yes.
That's quick checks.
Yes, that's not on this property.
Okay, thank you.
We all looked at that. All right. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. McFarland, as it relates to the use of the property, you've indicated that it's professional office?
Professional office or business office.
Okay. The statement of operation says that tenants of the building would be permitted to conduct the, any permitted uses in the NC zone.
Yes, we'll correct that.
Pardon?
We will correct that.
Okay, so for the record, no dental or medical offices in the building?
Correct.
And if those are being proposed, you'd have to come back here to verify that there's adequate parking?
Agreed.
Thank you, that's all.
Just briefly on the soil exportation, you had indicated that if you need it, you'll get the permit?
Yes, I did.
And that can be a condition of resolution compliance and the approval.
Agreed.
This issue has just come up because historically, this soil removal permit was handled at the building department. After they got resolution compliance and got their building permit, then when they started excavating, they would address it then. Internally, it's probably better that they address it with the board and make it part of resolution compliance. That's the only reason it's coming up.
Mr. Klee, that's a great idea. Do you think we should add that to our checklist?
I think there's all probably already in the checklist, any and all outside agencies. Historically, we waited till after they got their building permit, they were, you know, constructing, we would look for this permit. But it can't hurt to like, you know, have it in there as well.
All right, thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Prezzy?
You were talking about a roadway at that other end there and it's too close to this roadway and so forth. I understand that. And you have extra parking spaces. Would it be possible just to remove a couple of parking spaces and make an emergency entrance into there somehow, just enough to get an emergency vehicle into that path into that roadway there? Not a whole roadway, just for emergency purposes only?
It would be, I mean, I wouldn't object to it if you think it's necessary, but we have here now is we have, we have three lanes, you know, ingress and then two lanes egress here. And then I did propose a cross-access easement to the adjoining property, but I think you're asking for an emergency access there.
Oh, because even if you can't get the other one, you're going to try to get.
No, I don't.
At that size, that much parking, I think you just have another way in, an emergency only, not a regular traffic road.
Right, no, I don't object to that if the board thinks it's important.
Thank you.
We'll provide it.
Nice, very nice.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Can we just, before we sort of fold that in, can we wait until we hear from Mr. Ray? Because quite frankly, it's a county road and so when people want to make a left into this project, now we've got two areas where people are going to back up, trying to make lefts to come in the property. We want to make sure it's going to be safe. I like the idea. I think it's a great relief valve and I think from a traffic engineering, design and safety perspective, I want to make sure that someone can tell us that the county's going to tell us we can do it. I don't want there to be a problem later, they come back, say, well, we can't do it, the county won't let us.
If we put it in the suggestion box instead of the required, then we can, then we can work on that as the county agrees or disagrees. Thank you. Good suggestion. Anyone else from the board? Okay.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call up the architect, Naf Tali Gutt.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state your name and spell your last with a record.
Naf Tali Gutt, G U T. Licensed architect, New Jersey, multiple other states. I have testified before this board. These drawings were prepared under my supervision.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We accept your credentials, of course, and before we begin, what a beautiful building.
Thank you.
Okay, Naf Tali, if you could, please describe the building elevations and floor plans and if you're going to rely on any exhibits, just identify them for the record.
Yes, so just a brief overview first. So the proposed building is designed to be both functional and aesthetically pleasing with the following specifications. On the first floor, we have 40,070 square feet. Second floor is 39,108 square feet. Third floor is 35,831 square feet. Total area being 115 and 15 square feet. That's 100,000, okay. The building will be to be construction, light gauge metal studs, infill walls and interior partitions. Will be a fully sprinkled building. Will have two elevators serving all the levels and three stairways on each floor to ensure safe and efficient evacuation if necessary. The ground floor is designed for optimal accessibility and convenience. We have four entrances. We have one on each side, one here, one there, on both ends. Provide easy access from the surrounding parking areas. The highlight of this floor would be the dramatic three-floor lobby that greets you when you walk in. An open staircase at the far end connects all the levels, which will be over there, creating a sense of openness and connectivity throughout the building. Additional amenities on this floor include a large shared conference room, which will be right over there. There's a mailroom, which will be right up over there. We have spacious men and women's restrooms on all the floors. There's electrical and janitor rooms on each floor. There's a sprinkler room with easy exterior access. We have 23 office suites of various sizes to accommodate different tenant needs. And if we could please go to the next sheet, it would be A six. Second floor continues the theme of openness with lounge areas designed for collaboration and relaxation, that would be over there. It also includes another 23 office suites, similar to the ones on the ground floor. The third floor offers open lounge areas that overlook the three-story lobby right over there, enhancing the building's sense of community and connectivity. This level also features a shared exterior deck for tenants only to enjoy, that'll be right there. The third floor houses 14 larger office suites catered to tenants who require more space. Okay, the building height, as Graham mentioned, is 38 feet, five and seven eighths inches to the top of the roof. As per Mr. Peters' comment, the dimensions did add up to 35 and 6 inches and that was just a tolerance and we will fix that. We are seeking a height variance to maintain roughly three feet between the floors for structural systems, mechanical installations. This design allows to provide a finished ceiling height of roughly nine and a half feet on each floor, which we feel is essential for the comfort and aesthetic standards expected of a Class A office building like this. I just want to talk about the shape of the building a minute. The shape and orientation of the building are a result of a collaborative effort between our team and Graham's team. Our goal was to maximize exposure to Leesville Road without hindering traffic circulation and maintaining parking around the whole building in an efficient and cohesive manner on a regular and challenging shaped site. If you could go to the rendering, I think that is A four. Thank you, Andrew. The building's facade will primarily feature HPL panels, which stands for High Pressure Laminate Panels. Secondary will have EFIS, which is insulation. I'm sorry about that. EFIS, which stands for Insulated and Finished System. Those are gonna be used in the secondary areas. The HPL panels will be staggered in varying thicknesses, colors and sizes to create a dynamic and visual engaging facade that wraps continuously around the building, which would breaking up the potential monotony of a long expansion, being that it's such a long building. We are asking for a sign variance, for a building sign variance, being that the building is so big. So we're requesting signage variance for two additional signs, meaning one for each side of the building. Each individual sign will not exceed eighty square feet. This will ensure adequate visibility and weight finding for tenants and visitors, and it should not overwhelm the building's exterior. In conclusion, we believe this project will be a valuable addition to the community, offering modern office spaces while respecting the site's unique characteristics. We have thoughtfully considered both the functionality and aesthetics in our design to meet the needs of the future tenants and the community at large. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Marza.
Why can't you have the building within the height that's required?
It's just rough to get three floors within thirty-five feet and have enough room for the thick It's a big building, so there's a lot of mechanicals and there's a big Sorry about that. Three floors, we want to maintain at least nine and a half feet of ceiling height on each floor. And additionally, we have a lot of stuff running in between the floors. We have a thick floor system, floor trusses, and mechanicals and sprinkling systems. To get all that to fit within this envelope is not really possible without We would have to bring down the ceiling out of each floor to less than nine feet, or less than what we want, less than is acceptable for such a building.
I'm sorry, less than what you want?
Less than what we consider a Class A building. Nine-six is like a standard of comfortable ceiling height for such big offices.
It's really more of an aesthetic, and as opposed to, it's not a hardship. Of course, you could build the building at thirty-five feet. What he's saying is, he's trying to make it a Class A building, state-of-the-art, what you would expect if you were to go into a brand-new building. So you have nine-and-a-half-foot ceilings on each floor and all the equipment in between, because it's such a long expansive building. There's so much stuff to put in between them. So, yeah, we could eliminate, and then you'd only have eight, what, how big would the ceiling be? Eight feet? It's not a hardship, it's a better planning alternative.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Follow up on the board member's question. It appears from your drawings that the first two floors, floor to ceiling or floor to floor, are twelve-and-a-half feet. Is there a reason the third floor needs to be thirteen-and-a-half feet? Could you just explain that to the board?
Yeah, so the third floor is the roof trusses. The roof trusses have to slope to get the, have to be higher to get the slope. That's the slope, so we have to max the height at thirty-five and five and seven-eighths and go down to create the pitch for the water and still not go over that number. So essentially, we're leaving a little extra room for the roof trusses to create that pitch.
I think the board's trying to understand, even if you have nine-and-a-half-foot finish, you've got four foot, you've got three foot between each floor, between floor of the first floor and the, I'm sorry, the ceiling of the first floor and the floor of the second floor.
Correct.
Then you have three feet between the ceiling of the second floor and the floor of the third floor. And then you have four feet between the ceiling of the third floor and the roof.
Right, so let me try to explain that better. So say we need three feet of floor trusses, right, at a minimum, and we want to pitch this roof. In order to create the pitch, we need to start much higher, so that way at our least level, we have at least three feet. So I'm leaving an extra foot for that, so we create that pitch, and still get at least three feet of a floor truss to span this building.
And that's for snow and rain and water?
Yeah.
That's why you want to pitch the roof, because you don't want something that will freeze and
And collect water.
Eliminate water, so that's why you need that pitch.
Correct.
Yep. Another simple answer, Mr. Marza, would be some of the equipment on top of the roof extends the height of the building as well. So it's not necessarily just the top of the roof, but it's also the equipment on top.
Well, respectfully, Mr. Shay, let me ask a question then. You didn't discuss the parapet. Could you please discuss the proposed parapet for the building? And its height, and the total height from the parapet to the ground?
Okay, I was just assuming that that was factored in, but yeah, go ahead.
Can we bring up the elevation page?
Elevation?
Elevation, do we have that, elevation page? It's A8? Andrew, if you could just zoom in onto the right side where it shows elevations, yeah, right there where your hand is? Yeah, right there, yeah, that's good.
I couldn't read that tiny writing either.
Yeah. There you go.
Yeah, just do the elevation very top. The parapet of the top line.
Can we get in a little tighter? Does it go any tighter?
That's it.
I believe it's four feet, if I remember correctly, if I'm reading this correctly, for the parapet, which should be adequate to hide all the furnaces and units on top.
So then from the ground floor to the parapet's forty-two and a half feet?
It'll be thirty?
Mr. Tremmer, we're getting taller.
It's on page A6.
Again, so it should be thirty-eight, five and seven-eighths, plus four feet, so it'll be forty-two and five and seven-eighths. That should be the total height.
Madam Chair, a question. What is the height limit?
Thirty-five.
So is this a conforming application or not?
No.
Why is the height issue our problem?
No, the parapet doesn't count in the height.
Technically, it doesn't count, but it's still taller than
I know, but that's not how you measure height, so based on what does the ordinance define as height? So almost every town's ordinance is, not just Jackson, don't count the parapets or other things that are more decorative.
Even if we're not counting the parapet, it's still
It's a variance. It's a bulk variance, exceed the height.
So it's not conforming?
Without the parapet, it's thirty-eight and five inches, I believe, right?
Five and seven.
Which is still below the standards of the D variance.
Because ours is thirty-five, so it's three feet, three point five.
Three and a half, yeah.
Three and a half.
It adds less than three and a half.
Which is exactly why I keep asking Mr. Tremmer if we have the proper fire equipment.
Angle, sorry, keep on forgetting about that. Might not be a safe angle to climb at. But again, I'm gonna go back to the original question, why are they twelve-foot floors?
Well, some of it is for mechanical issues.
I understand that. The trusses usually are about a foot wide, so eight-foot ceilings, nine-foot, even ten-foot gives you two feet over your head.
Got your air conditioning and returns in there?
I think they're taking some privileges. It's a little bit bigger than they could cut back.
It's very hard to cut between floor to floor and everything to fit. It's a big building, a large building. Those trunks are could be two feet deep. That's besides the floor system.
Yeah, but you're taking four and a half feet. You're going twelve and a half feet for an eight-foot ceiling, you have another four and a half feet above it.
I'm doing nine and a half plus three for between floor to floor.
Nine-foot ceilings.
And the fire department mentions nothing about the height in their review letter.
Can I also ask about the signs? So you need a waiver for the signs. Where are the signs going to be and what's the height of the signs? Are they at thirty-five feet or?
They'll be below thirty-five feet. They won't be at the very tip. Like, as shown, it'd be like thirty-five feet, would be the top, roughly.
The top would be thirty-five feet?
Maybe it'll be, okay, it could be thirty-five feet. I don't mind lowering that. That's a concern.
So if you look at, maybe if you pull up exhibit A8, we can see where the wall signs are proposed?
As shown, they're shown at the top, like right below the parapet. Wouldn't be a issue to lower that.
So, Mr. Gutt, there are three wall signs on the proposed building?
We're proposing four, one for each side. It's not well shown because it's on a funny angle, but we would like to have one on each side, just for people coming from any angle to see it.
Mr. McFarland's gonna have to return and give us testimony about the relief necessary to have three wall signs where one's permitted.
I believe, who is, it's just one?
It's in our report. It's been in our
He was coming back.
I guess to Ms. Jennings, we sort of tiptoed around this. The height variance that you're proposing is a bulk or C variance, correct?
Correct. It's under the ten percent maximum permitted height for a principal building, so it's a C variance.
You, your clients, your professionals, all understand that you're proposing one-eighth of an inch below what's permitted from being a D variance that can only be approved by the zoning board of adjustment, correct?
Correct.
And your client understands that if he builds the building and he comes back and the building's an eighth of an inch over, he's going to the zoning board for an approval, correct?
Correct.
Perfect. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Yes. Keep that ruler handy. All right. Anyone with a question? It's gonna be tight. That's what we see.
Maybe we'll lower it by one-eighth of inch.
All right. I'll trust your math and your engineering. Four signs, that's and they're big.
Well, each individual will maintain less than eighty inches, eighty square feet. I was just asking for extra, seeing that this building has so many faces.
Please remember, it's eighty square feet for one sign on the building. You're asking for three signs, correct?
Four.
And are each of them going to be eighty square feet? That's why I think we need to get Mr. McFarland back up, because what's permitted is one at eighty, or fifteen percent. So we're looking for you to give us a specific so we can determine what, if any, relief is necessary, so you can get what you're asking for.
We asked for three or four? Three or four?
I believe we asked for three.
One, two, three.
Okay, so let's revise that to be three total, and we're gonna have seventy-two feet for each sign.
Three signs and on which
Seventy-two square feet each.
The front and the two sides?
Correct.
Nothing on the back?
Correct.
And again, just to keep this in context, this is a ten-acre site where the minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet. So you could have broken this lot up into a number of different lots, and everybody would be entitled with thirty-square-foot signs. So it's just the fact that we're doing one project on one large site.
It's just a matter of overwhelming. That's the concern, I think. Most of the people that would be coming there would be coming on this most likely down the front end. I can't see why you'd need one over here. You probably could do with two. One on the front and one on the side coming from Leesville. Two would probably be sufficient.
Okay.
Okay.
Two?
Two.
Fine.
Two it is.
And that would be one on the front and one on the Leesville side. That would make sense, because you don't need two frontages.
I mean, if you get two opposite ends, would cover everything, correct?
Right, right, okay.
Then what's the square footage? Still seventy-two?
Seventy-two.
Yes.
Gotcha.
That make everybody happy? Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else from the board? Anything else from the professionals? Any thoughts? Let's open it up to the public.
Well, do we want to have our traffic?
Yeah, but I'm just thinking he's here, and he's the one that's probably gonna get the most questions from the public, so traffic is traffic. Anyone from the public would like to come forward and ask anything of the architect? You may come forward now.
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public cross-examination.
All in favor?
Aye.
That takes care of that, so.
Thank you.
Now, we'll get to traffic.
Okay. Mr. Ray, if you could come on up?
Long time no see. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last with a record.
John Ray, R-E-A, professional engineer with McDonough and Ray Associates, 1431 Lakewood Road, Manasquon, New Jersey.
Mr. Board, accept his credentials.
Didn't see you for a while.
Yeah, it's been a week or so.
Took a vacation for a month. Welcome.
If you could, Mr. Ray, just for the record, confirm that your office is of the site and the area around the site?
Yes, we prepared the traffic impact analysis for the project, which of course requires both municipal and county approval.
And if you could go through your analysis for the board, hitting the highlights, please.
Sure. Our traffic report was last revised September 18th, 2024. It is what I believe is a full, fully detailed traffic impact analysis for the project. We've been out to the site on numerous occasions to review existing traffic conditions in the area. We conducted traffic counts, morning and afternoon, peak hour traffic counts at the intersection of Leesville Road at Veterans Highway and Don Connor Boulevard. We projected traffic volumes to a design year of 2033, which is in accordance with Ocean County Planning Board protocol. They like to look at a ten-year horizon, and since we started the project in 2023, we projected the traffic volumes ahead to a design year of 2033. In addition to the traffic that is going to be generated from this project, we also looked at two other projects in the area that have been approved. One of them was referred to before by Mr. McFarland. It is the school campus that is just north of us. That project has been approved for two girls' elementary schools and a girls' high school with a total number of, if I'm not mistaken, about twenty-three hundred students. We did the traffic study for that project, so we have the traffic numbers. There's also a mixed-use project that was approved by the zoning board that is opposite, on the opposite side of Veterans Highway here, on the opposite side of the municipal building. It's a mixed-use project. The name of the project is Port, P-O-R-T, and Cone, C-O-H-N. That's the name of the applicants. We included that traffic into our projections of 2033 traffic volumes, and we also included the NJDOT's background traffic growth rate data for the area. So we took a look at, what I believe, very conservatively, the two other approved projects that are in the area, plus the growth rate from DOT, which basically takes into account projects that are included in the area. So I think we took a So I think we took a pretty conservative look at future design year twenty thirty-three traffic volumes. And essentially, what we determined from the traffic study was that although the site driveway that will be shared with Quick Check that goes out to Leesville Road will operate at acceptable levels of service, a C level of service for the morning peak hour and a D for the afternoon peak hour, the same holds true for the signalized intersection at Veterans Highway. I think we have a C in the morning and a D in the afternoon, both considered to be acceptable. Notwithstanding the level of service conditions, we do need to do mitigation at the traffic signal at, at Leesville and Veterans Highway. And the reason why we need to do the mitigation is because the southbound queue on Leesville Road, uh, if, if there's no mitigation to the traffic signal, the queue will extend past the driveway that we share with Quick Check. So in order to mitigate that condition, we have proposed a southbound lead left-turn arrow to the signal so that left-turn movements on southbound Leesville Road will get an advanced left-turn green arrow. We've proposed that, and we've also proposed a southbound right-turn lane and a northbound right-turn lane. And with those improvements in place, we can achieve a C level of service for the morning and afternoon peak hour for the signalized intersection, and our intersection will continue to operate at acceptable levels of service as well. And so there is mitigation that's required, and I just do want to point that for the board, that the mitigation that's required is not solely due to the traffic impact from this project. It's a cumulative impact from the school campus to the north of us, the Port Cone mixed-use project, the existing traffic volumes, and the, uh, growth rate from the NJ DOT. But we have to consider all of those things because those other two projects are approved, and, uh, this is what the township and the county requires from us. So we do have mitigation that is required. It's in the report. The county is aware of it. We've made a resubmission to the county with the revised traffic study, and, uh, that was our findings.
Thank you. And, uh, you heard Mr. Bresley had requested the applicant to consider perhaps an emergency access, a secondary on Leesville Road close to the school campus. Can you opine on that, please?
Uh, I think one of two things is possible, and I think Mr. McFarland spoke to that issue. If we can possibly get an emergency access to the school campus to the north of us, I think that would be a better alternative to, to get connected to the school campus so that we could use their driveway in an emergency. But if we can't do that, we can apply to the county for an emergency access at that, I guess it would be the northern access aisle on our plan.
I wasn't talking about a regular road coming in. I'm talking about something with a chain across it for emergency-
Yes, I understand.
Not regular traffic coming in and out.
I understand, Mr. Bresley, and, and-
Emergency vehicles in there.
We, we understand, and if we can't get the cross-access connection to the property to the north of us, we will apply for that, one way or another. We will take care of that issue.
Thank you.
Any questions?
And, and the last thing I wanted to mention was, and I think Graham mentioned it as well, we have adequate parking, uh, with respect to the municipal ordinance. We actually have a surplus, if I'm not mistaken, twenty parking spaces. So I was here, I heard the testimony about possibly losing a few parking spaces for one reason or another. It's not an issue. We have enough parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Ray? Mr. Varza?
Um, I'm not finding the statement of operations. Uh, what time is the office building going to be open?
Generally speaking, I think that the peak hour for the office building in the morning will be between seven and nine. It depends on who the tenants are. Some people may start a little bit earlier than others. I know very rarely I get into the office at seven in the morning if I've had a planning board meeting the night before, but, um, it's, it's gonna be, anytime between seven and nine in the morning will, will be the start time. And, and, uh, what I did want to point that was, I went back and I looked at the traffic study for the, uh, school campus. The start time for the elementary schools and the high school will be nine fifteen. It'll be after the peak hour for the office building. So there's a little bit of a, you know, it's, it's a non-coincidental peak hour.
Thank you.
The statement of operations says typical range, eight AM to seven PM.
Uh, the, yeah, those would be the total hours from morning to, to night. But the peak hour in the morning probably be sometime between seven and nine.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Sorry about that. Mr. Ray, you did the traffic study for the school campus next door, right?
Correct.
Do you recall the timing of their peak traffic?
The timing of their traffic? I do, if you bear with me one second, I did, we did take a look at that when we did this traffic. The, um, the schools start at nine fifteen in the morning, which will be after the peak hour for the office building. And in the afternoon, the grammar school lets out at three o'clock, and the high school at three forty-five. So again, it would be before the peak hour for the, uh, the office building.
Okay, and, and, and if I remember correctly, the school campus was a twelve-month campus?
That's, I'm, I'm trying to recall-
It was eleven? I think this one was less. I think the girl's school was less. I think it was eleven, right?
I thought the girl's school was eleven.
Correct. Nobody's there in August.
And the office building obviously is a full year.
And no summer camp. I remembered that one.
And they get out early on Fridays.
Right. Anything else?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ray, thank you for your testimony. The mitigation or signal timing improvement you discussed, um, who will be responsible for them?
That's, that's the great unanswered question simply because it is a cumulative impact from the three projects, including ours, and the growth and every, and, and that's subject to, to the county. I suspect typically what the county does is the first person that comes in the door will be responsible, and there may be some kind of an agreement where the next person that comes in, you know, picks up a portion of it.
So, and again, I, I appreciate the answer, and I'm, I'm not disagreeing with it, but I want to make sure that board members and the public and sort of laypeople understand. Will this applicate, applicant be responsible to pay into a fund? In other words, how does the Jackson Township populace make sure that this timing gets done when it's necessary? Does the town now have to undertake the, the responsibility of calling the county every year, getting traffic counts done, seeing at what point we, we reach these limits? Is this a, a self-policing type thing where we're gonna expect whoever gets going first to do it? I'm, I'm trying to figure out-
Right.
The way that the, that the public improvements get done, and as respectfully as I can say it about the county, I don't think the town's quite comfortable hoping the county gets it right.
I-
Hope it doesn't offend anybody.
Okay, I understand. And as I've testified to on many occasions, every applicant that has an application in front of the county planning board has to pay a traffic impact fee to the county upon the, getting their approval. As far as a guarantee that these improvements will be made, I, I do have to tell you, Ernie, that in the pa, in the past couple of years, the county has been pretty much on top of these things. As evidence of that, the, the improvements at Glory's Corner are in, you know, that was, there were quite a few projects in the area that contributed to the need for those improvements. The improvements have been done. It, it's gonna be the county's responsibility. Uh, the only thing I can say is they have been pretty responsible as of late in getting these things, things done on time. But that's the best answer I can give you.
I'm not sure if I had an opportunity to look at your most current traffic report, but the one that was submitted originally back in May of twenty-three talked about your site traffic experi, your site traffic leaving the site experience, experiencing a level of service F during the PMP. Can you explain both globally and specifically with one point of access, what happens to people leaving the site? Because this site doesn't have a control as to when people leave. If it's Class A office space and everyone works nine to five, at five o'clock, five hundred people are gonna decide to go home. And I think your, your peak hour looks at, I think, two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty vehicle trips leaving the site in the peak hour. So with the site next door, schools, we actually staggered. So I don't think there was any more than twenty or twenty-five percent in any, I think it was forty-five minute period. So here, we don't have that control. So my concern is, what happens when that peak fifteen or twenty-minute period, when everyone gets out at five or five-thirty? What's anticipated at that, at the site driveway in the existing intersection?
Well, the anticip, the, with, with the mitigation that we've proposed with the left-turn arrow for the southbound traffic and the northbound and southbound right-turn lanes, the projected level of service is gonna be a D level of service, a little bit better than an F. Um, as, as far as all of the people getting out at five o'clock, I think the architect testified there are gonna, more than likely, there are gonna be multiple tenants in this building. I don't see a large corporate user taking the building. Uh, there are gonna be multiple tenants. The odds of everybody getting out at the same time at five o'clock are pretty, pretty slight. I think our traffic projections, which are based on the IT data, are reasonable, probably still a little bit on, on the high side. So I think with the mitigation to the signal and the intersection that we've proposed, plus the fact that we're gonna have multiple tenants, I, I don't see that as being an issue.
Can you provide some, some additional testimony as to the thought process behind connecting this site to the gas station site?
Yes, uh, the Quick Check. Yes, the, the thought process behind it is very simply the county wants to limit the number of access points to the county road. And so that's, that's basically the thought, to, to limit the number of access points and the number of potential conflicts.
So I'm sorry, is Quick Check traffic gonna come out to this site?
Yes, we're gonna share the Quick Check driveway. Yes.
I'm sorry, this site? This set of plans has a driveway that goes out to the existing street, correct?
It's the existing Quick Check driveway that we're gonna connect to. I don't know if Anthony can put the planes back up?
It's a very, it's a very wide Quick Check driveway. I use it twice a week.
And, and there will be, as part of our mitigation, I neglected to mention it, there will be widening along Leesville Road to provide a left-turn lane, not only for the school campus, but there already is a left-turn lane for the Quick Check, which we're gonna utilize. But there will be a widening along Leesville Road to the north of our project so that the school campus has a left-turn lane. And then when you get down south of the, we've got a whole county improvement plan, which Anthony can put up if, if people want to take a look at it in more detail. We can, uh, we're going to re-stripe Leesville Road to provide a two-way left-turn lane south of the school campus so that not only do we have a left-turn lane, but the strip center on the other side, where there's a pizza place and I believe an ice cream place on the, be the west side of Leesville Road, they're gonna have a left-turn lane as well when we're done.
Okay. Internally, to the existing Quick Check driveway, Mr. McFarland indicated the latest set of plans includes sort of a fourth leg to that intersection.
The Quick Check intersection?
Where?
Oh, 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 internally, yes.
Internally.
Yes.
Can you explain the thought process behind that? Is that, is that just a, another relief valve? Is that gonna, I don't know how that helps or hinders the number of vehicles going out to Leesville Road?
Well, it, it, it doesn't make any, it, it doesn't have any impact on the number of vehicles going out to Leesville Road. What it does do is if you take a look at the plan that's up on the, uh, board right now, there's a, a large portion of the parking lot that fronts Leesville Road. Without that connection, they would all have to travel east. Yeah, they would all, all those people in that front parking area would have to backtrack to the east to come back out to the, uh, the access to Leesville Road. So we just thought it made more sense to provide an interconnection there to allow those people in that part of the parking lot to just have a direct connection.
My hopefully last question, um, can you explain why we can or can't get a traffic light at this site access in Leesville Road?
Uh, basically, two reasons, not enough traffic to warrant a traffic signal and the proximity to the existing signal at Veterans Highway. The, the county looked into that, but, um, they, they were more interested in us making improvements to the intersection at Veterans Highway to, to put everything in place.
Quick question. So due to the fact that we have the level F service for one component of this, would the applicant be amenable to, um, to linking the CO to the road improvements like we've done in other applications?
Right, uh, Mr. Shea, I'm not sure I understand. Uh, what was the condition?
So the, the, the condition would be, um, CO is not issued to the applicant until, until they, until they get the road improvements done.
I just count cars. That's above my pay grade. I'm gonna let Ms. Jennings take that.
We, we've done that in a few other applications.
Yeah, they, they agree with that, yeah. The CO, not the building permit. They can go ahead and start building, right?
They can go in.
But the CO.
Right, and just, just so the board members are clear, one of the reasons that I, and I appreciate, um, Mr. Shea bringing that up, one of the reasons that's important on, on this particular project is this is not a phased project. It's just one building. It's not like a warehouse project or a school campus where there's three, four, half a dozen buildings where you can say, okay, well, let's, let's count traffic every year, every time we get another building CO. It's one building. They might not occupy it the first year, but it's one, you're not building this building in parts. So, thank you, Mr. Shea.
Good, very good. Any other questions for Mr. Ray? Okay, thank you.
At this time, we're gonna call Mr. McFarland back up to give planning testimony. And just so the record is clear, there are, is a request for the building signage to have two, where you're allowed to have one at eighty square feet, so we're gonna have two at seventy-two square feet. And then there's a, the actual freestanding sign is also limited to thirty square feet, and we're asking that to be seventy-two square feet. Two, we agreed to reduce it. There was three proposed, but it, there was a request to reduce it to two, and the applicant has agreed to that. And then, of course, the building height is the third variance. And then there was, uh, one area on the property where the buffer was not wide enough, and there was also the loading space being eleven feet wide as opposed to twelve feet wide. So Graham, um, you've already been sworn in, so if you could just run us through the variances and in your professional opinion as to why the applicant meets both the positive and the negative criteria?
Yes, and I see Anthony has a two up there for us, which is the, which is the site plan, which is important to, to look at when we discuss this, this variance that we're requesting for the building height. Uh, again, ordinance allows thirty-five-foot building height. That thirty-five feet is measured from outside grade to the flat part of the roof. Your ordinance also provides a provision that, uh, parapets that are no greater than four feet do not count towards the, towards the building height. So the permissible, permissible building height by ordinance is thirty-five feet. Uh, we're proposing thirty-eight feet, five and, you know, a half inches, five and seven-eighth inches, something, something like that, just below the threshold to retain jurisdiction at, at this board. You heard, uh, Mr. Gutt provide some testimony as to why it's important for the, for the operation and the benefit of the building to provide for a first-class office space, to provide for, uh, you know, feeling of increased volume and space in those offices and to attract the type of, uh, clients and tenants that are our, our client wants to attract for this type of, this type of building. Uh, we showed the, the appeal of the exterior of the building. Of course, that is related to being able to get a building of this size with this efficiency of, efficiency of its layout and use. And that all factors into the request for the, uh, for, for the variance. It's important to note that this building, uh, the required front setback in the zone is, is sixty feet. This building is almost four hundred and thirty feet from, from Leesville Road. So that is, uh, you know, seven times further than what the ord, what the ordinance requires. Uh, as, as we look at this, this C-two variance, C-two are called the flexible or, you know, subjective variances, where we're supposed to weigh all of the factors and determine if this variance has, you know, what are the benefits of that variance and what are the negative impacts of that variance. what are the benefits of that variance, and what are the negative impacts of that variance. I would stipulate that this proposal of proposing a building that's 38 feet, you know, plus or minus, seeking this height variance is beneficial to the community. It allows a project to be developed with a, with a building of this character and class. It satisfies master plan objectives by providing for economic growth, supporting tax-ratable base, increasing economic growth and development. All those items are discussed in the master plan several times, and that's an important consideration in a, in a project, in a project like this. Again, this building is setback 400 plus or minus feet from Leesville Road, and also based upon, based upon the site, the site topography, the elevation of Leesville Road is approximately elevation 128 or 130. The first floor of this building is down at elevation 119. So the first floor of this building is approximately eight or nine feet lower than Leesville Road. So this, this site already sits lower than the road. Visual perception, nobody is going to be able to tell that this building is higher than what the ordinance allows. Setback 400 feet from the building, one beautiful building proposed. I think all of those, when you put, when you take all of those factors into consideration, that there is no negative impact created by this, by this project, and the board would certainly be warranted in granting the relief as requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I think this might be a good time if there's anyone in the audience who would like to question Mr. McFarland, or Mr. Gutt?
Gutt.
Yes, Mr. Gutt, those are the two we didn't allow. So anyone want to come forward, ask any questions about this project from these two gentlemen?
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public cross-examination of these witnesses.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, if anyone in the audience wants to ask any questions about this particular, or have anything to say about this particular project, this is your opportunity.
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public testimony portion of this application.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Sure, just to, in quick summary, we're dealing with a permitted use that's asking for minor deviations at best, and the result will be really a state-of-the-art, Class A office building that I think the town will be really proud of, and that we respect the request that you grant an approval.
We'll look for a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve this application with the height variance to just under 39 feet, the signage of two signs at 72 feet on the building, and the entrance sign variance that was requested, along with the loading zone variance to 11 feet, and the, the promise that they will try to have easement either with the adjoining property or onto Leesville Road. Also, the two entrances on the quick check road, I would also move to approve.
Looking for a second?
Second motion. I'm saying that because we're not used, or many years I haven't seen an application like this with a Class A building. And I think the definitions we were given by the architects, the reason for the depth between the floors and stuff, and all the answers that were explained in detail, really showed the justification for these variances, because they're really minor. And you look at the size of the property, the acreage, the size of the building, and the layout of it, in my opinion, is really laid out perfect for the traffic flow. I really think it's an ideal situation that I came through, and the professionalism of all the testimony of why you have stuff there, I make a motion to second that.
I will get a roll call, please.
Mr. Bresi?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Marzo?
No, I'm not satisfied with the benefits to the community. We already have a state-of-the-art office building in the area that is not yet fully leased, and I'm just not, I don't, there's no reason for this request for a height variance. So, no, thank you.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Trimmer?
No, I have grave concerns about using a quick check driveway without a second roadway going in. I think it creates a very big problem. My own personal experience living in the neighborhood, there were some days just with quick check, it's a nightmare to get out. Now you're adding 500 vehicles, and again, I'm going to pull the emergency card in an emergency situation. It's very tight, it's very tough, and I also don't like the fact that there's only 24 feet going around two to three sides of the building. You cannot put one ladder there and get another piece of equipment around, you're locked off. So that's my reason for a no.
Mr. Weingart?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes, and my reasoning is, we want Class A buildings proposed for this town. We want to be prepared for the future. This is a good tax-ratable also for the township. The quick check entrance, if anybody's ever been on it, was designed, obviously, to extend to another, another building or development, it's just quite obvious if you're on it. I feel that this is a good way forward, and that the variances requested were reasonable. Thank you.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes. Congratulations. Oh, wait, hold it. Mr. Wall is back.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
Thank you very much.
I think we'll take a 10-minute break, please. Thank you. That means back by.
On the 425 Basso Street property to increase the number of students to be enrolled at the school from fifty to seventy. So it's just an expansion of the school that got approved on the property next door. There is no expansion to the existing structure on this site proposed. All existing accessory structures are to be removed. As will be more thoroughly discussed by the applicant site engineer, in addition to interior renovations to accommodate the school use, other minor improvements that are proposed include a bluestone walkway and a gravel driveway expansion to accommodate emergency vehicle access. A gravel walkway will be installed to enhance pedestrian connectivity between the two properties. If approved, the applicant will consolidate 425 and 417 Basso Street properties to create one cohesive school campus. The applicant is also simultaneously seeking amended minor site plan approval if deemed necessary for the neighboring 417 Basso Street property because the applicant is also requesting to construct a small walking path on 417 Basso Street to continue that pedestrian connectivity. Importantly, the applicant is fully conforming and requires no variances. As the applicant's traffic engineer will discuss in more detail, the parking requirement is satisfied because once the two lots are consolidated, twenty-seven parking spaces will be provided which exceeds the twenty-three spaces that are required for a high school with seventy students. In support of the application, the applicant will call the following witnesses: Heim Gross, the operation person from the school, Eli Halper, the site engineer, Malky Robb, the architect, and John Ray, the traffic engineer. As a matter of record, keeping the applicant is in receipt of the following reports: One, the board engineer's review letter dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four; Police Department Traffic Safety Unit Review Letter dated October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four; Township Fire Prevention District Two Review Letter dated October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four; and the Board Planner's Review Letter dated October twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. With that, we'd like to call up our first witness.
Thank you. Before we begin, gentlemen, you have anything you'd like to start with?
From an engineering perspective, not really. They're just converting the existing dwelling to a school similar to the adjacent property, and they're just providing a driveway interconnection or pedestrian connection between the two.
Anything, Mr. Peters?
Not until we hear the testimony, thank you.
All right, fine. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Gross, if you can come on first. They're gonna swear you in first. He's a fact witness, not an expert.
And what's his position?
He'll get into that.
Yeah, after a swim. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? All right, please state your name and spell your last of the record.
Heim Gross, G-R-O-S-S. I'm the president of Chalva High School.
And your credentials? Do you want to just set forth your experience?
So I'm not involved in the school. On day-to-day, I just sort of founded the school and hired the appropriate professionals to run the school.
Thank you. Welcome.
Okay, if you could, just for the record, can you indicate what the school's mission statement is?
Yeah, this school is for teenage girls who require individualized attention and would benefit from a small school. Teachers and staff are well-trained to provide the girls with that individualized instruction and attention.
And if you could describe the current school located at 555 Joe Parker Road in Lakewood? Some of the board members were not here when we presented the original application.
So, like you said, we're currently located at 555 Joe Parker Road in Lakewood. We've operated there for about eight years, and we have approximately thirty-three students to date.
And you're looking to move, you were here for the prior approval of 417 Basso Street to accommodate fifty students, correct?
Right, correct. So we obtained the prior approval of 417 Basso Street to accommodate fifty students, which is where we see the school growing over the next little bit. And we're now coming back and requesting to expand the school to include capacity for twenty more students at the 425 Basso Street property.
So that would be a total of seventy students at the school?
Correct.
Okay, what about staff members? How many will there be and what are their roles?
So we're looking to increase the staff members from twenty-four to thirty-one. Just to clarify, the staff members, that's, you know, a lot of staff members for this amount of students, so they take turns working shifts and a maximum of twelve staff members will be at the school at one time. The staff includes a principal, assistant principal, guidance counselor, both the staff and teachers.
Okay, and if you could just describe the school curriculum?
So it's a combination of religious and general studies. About seventy percent general studies comprising the core subjects that are taught in all high schools, and about thirty percent is religious instruction. Students receive a high school diploma upon graduation and try to give them, you know, a fully encompassing education that, you know, that meets their needs.
And if you could describe the hours of operation, are they gonna be the same as was previously testified to for the approved school?
Yes, that's gonna be the same as the previously approved school. School operates five days per week, Monday through Friday. Excuse me, Monday through Thursdays, nine-thirty a.m. to three p.m., and on Friday, we run from nine-thirty a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m.
And what about the staff members' hours? What are their hours?
Staff member hours are nine a.m. to four p.m. Obviously, not all the staff, but there are staff members present from nine a.m. to four p.m. On Friday, staff members leave at twelve-fifteen p.m.
And what about the weekends? Are there any schools during the weekend?
No, school is not in session on the weekend.
What about overnight? Do any of the students sleep overnight?
No.
Okay. Turning to school transportation, how will the students be transported to and from the school?
So the way we presently do and continue to do it is we have four to five fifteen-passenger vans that transport the students, and we intend to continue to do it that way.
Do you think that most of the students will be coming to the school via van?
Yes, ninety percent of students will be coming by van, and we anticipate ten percent being dropped off by the parents.
What about the students that are old enough to drive? Are they gonna be able to drive their cars to school?
No, we don't allow the students to drive or walk or ride bikes really to school.
And the vans that are coming and the parents that might be dropping off their students, are they coming to the 417 Basso property to utilize for both properties?
Yes, all the parking drop-offs are gonna remain at 417 Basso and walk over using the pedestrian walkway.
And it's your intent that the lots will be consolidated if this application is approved?
That's correct.
And that the purpose of the walking pass is to have pedestrian connectivity between the two sites?
That's correct.
What about the vans themselves? Are they gonna remain on-site after they drop off the girls?
No.
Okay. If you could just describe the school schedule for the calendar year, when does the school start, when does it break, et cetera?
So the school runs from September to June with a summer break in July and August. We're not proposing any activity during the summer months. And then during the year, we have two two-week breaks for religious holidays and eight to ten days off spread across the school year.
And what about, the girls are there pretty much for maybe breakfast and lunch, I don't know, but will there be cooking or food preparations on-site?
No, so we use an outside vendor that provides food and they deliver to school right before lunch.
And will there be a cooking facility in both the houses, 417 and 425, or is everything gonna be centralized?
No, everything is centralized in 417. This new property, 425 Basso, will be, you know, just an extra, some extra space and spreading things out a little bit. So anything that, if there were girls eating in there in their classrooms, they'd walk it over.
Okay. And generally, who is responsible for site maintenance?
So the applicant is responsible for arranging site maintenance, and we have an outside vendor that's presently performing, doing a job, and we'll continue with them.
With respect to the deliveries to the site, when I'm talking about the 425 Basso Street now, the new site, how often will there be deliveries and what type of deliveries would you expect?
So we expect one daily delivery for the food and one daily delivery of, you know, UPS or the like, one parcel carrier for school office supplies. I don't know that there'll be a separate delivery for 425 over 417, but probably be just one delivery to 417.
So you think the most of the delivery is gonna go to the 417 site?
Correct.
And you'll just walk over what 425 needs?
Correct.
Okay, and how about security? Is there any type of security at the school?
So we would put in a video surveillance system along with access control.
Okay, and if you could describe what types of student recreation that you offer?
So we plan to have the students using the basketball hoop and outdoor terrace that are at 417 Basso Street.
Okay. I think that's all your direct testimony unless there's anything that you want to say to the board directly. If not, we can have the, open it up to the board.
Is the, is the school functioning at this time?
Yes.
I was there yesterday.
Not at Jackson.
Not, I'm saying, in Jackson.
Right, I apologize. It's functioning at 555 Joe Parker in Lakewood, yeah.
Well, I was very distressed when I was there yesterday because the gutter system is falling down. It is lying across the building. It looks terrible, and I don't think that's very neighborly. I was really concerned because when we did this the first time, this is gonna be a small school, just a few girls, because they had some issues, and we understood that, and we took that into consideration. Now you're doubling, you may not be doubling the size of the people, but you are doubling the size of the facility. That, that has a concern. You started out telling us it was gonna be this little project, and now it's twice that little project. And, and I think that's of concern, I'm sure, to the neighbors. And I'm very sure that they don't like the look of what has happened to that facility since it's been empty. I, I hope you're going to do something about that very quickly.
So thank you for that. So to address the condition of the property today, to be honest, I wasn't aware of that, and I do apologize to the neighbors and everybody, but we're utilizing a management company, and I believe that there was some damage to the home, there was a flood or something like that, so it's maybe had some restoration work done, but shouldn't be left that way. So definitely make sure that that gets taken care of in short order. We haven't been, we're not operating there, haven't been there, but that's, obviously, we have to still make sure that's maintained. With regard to your second point, I, you know, again, definitely appreciate the concern. The way, way we view it is that we are doubling the site from four point two acres to eight point, you know, four acres or something like that, so really just providing more space for the girls and a little more room to spread out. But we were careful not to double the number of students, and we don't intend to ever have that number, you know, more than the number of students that we're proposing. But sort of, we, I guess, had the opportunity to, you know, acquire another four acres, and we just felt that it would be, it would be a better use. And I think still, you know, the number of students that we're proposing, which is seventy on an eighty-acre, you know, parcel, and once it's combined, is still a small use that, you know, that can remain contained and, and, you know, not be.
So you have, you have thirty-something students now in Lakewood?
Correct.
And you're going to be going from thirty-something now to seventy?
So.
That's more than double.
Right. So we, right, so just, right, I was referring to the, not doubling from the earlier application, but, but to be honest, we anticipate going probably from thirty-five to forty-five to fifty, and we're just allowing ourselves room for expansion. I don't think, we don't have plans to expand to seventy, you know, tomorrow or anytime soon. It's a small school, we want to maintain that, but we see in the long term that opportunity to, you know, to acquire again the eight-acre parcels, which we think is more than sufficient to provide for this number of girls and still keep it contained and small and, you know, as quiet as possible. And we're gonna be super careful to do that.
I guess, I guess what, what I see is that you came to us with, with what looked like a small project. And now it's gotten to be a bigger project. And it's in a neighborhood, it's, it's in a, a very precarious spot, I think, for, for doubling the size of the project.
Well, respectfully, you know, Dr. Campbell, it's a permitted use, so another school could have bought the property and put fifty students there or a hundred students there if they could park it. They just saw that the property, you know, so they grabbed it, and they're telling you seventy. Everything's based on parking. They didn't overpark it. They just have enough for the staff and the students and enough van spaces for what he's saying. If it was to get any larger than that, he'd have to come back here for another approval, and we would address those concerns then?
Now, you, you told us all about how you were going to make it look when you were here previously. None of that has happened, so the, the exterior and the grounds are in very poor condition. Granted, April, May, June, July, August, September, October, November, December, we're ten months. Ten months, and not a thing has been done, and the place is falling apart. And I think that's unkind and unneighborly. So something has to happen there, and it has to happen quickly.
I agree again, and I apologize for that. You know, just with resolution compliance and the amount of time that it'll take to get the building plans in place, I think, I don't know that, you know, how long it'll take to start the project, but certainly in terms of the upkeep and maintenance, we're gonna do a better job at that. I also just wanna stress again that we're not, like, maximizing this, this project and saying we could, this is the max amount that's allowed, like, we're, I think we're well below that, and, you know, we're trying to keep it as a small project still.
How will we know how many girls are being helped there? I mean, how do we know it's not going to be eighty? How will we know it will be under seventy?
Again, obviously, we would, you know, comply with the, you know, the rule and ordinance that's allowed us. We don't have intention to go, you know, more than that.
I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what the ordinance tells us, the number.
It's all related to parking, so, so many parking spaces per the student, just like every other school application that's come before this board, and I think it's a self-certifying, it's what some of the other ones have agreed to as a condition of their approval.
We'll be clear about the number.
Correct.
Thank you. Any comments from the board?
Ms. Jennings, hi. You said something about consolidation of both lots. Did you mention anything like that? Consolidating both lots. Did you mention something like that?
Correct. That's gonna be a condition of the approval, that we consolidate the lots.
Okay, so maybe this is more of a question for an engineer, assuming you have one here, but.
Eli's coming next.
It might be cleaner to have one circular driveway going between both properties and just one in, one out instead of having the way.
Well, yeah, why don't, I think, why don't you wait for Mr. Halper to come up? I don't think this person's gonna be able to address all those types of questions. There may be a reason why it's that way due to the nature of the sites themselves.
Mr. Sullivan?
I noticed that on the 425 Basso Street lot, you're proposing walkways in the back, which is very aesthetically pleasing, but I also noticed that they connect with a neighboring property's walks where it looks like paths that go into the neighboring property. How will you be segregating your property from their property? Will you be having a fence there? If you look at the map of the proposed walkways, you'll see they cross over the property line.
Yeah, it's interesting. I just noticed that myself earlier. He said he could put a fence up. He has no problem doing that if that's something the board would like to see.
Yes, we would prefer having a fence.
Absolutely.
Fence around the property.
I don't know what's feasible, but definitely to protect the neighbors' privacy in those areas that are, you know, adjacent to them. But, yeah, I don't know, like, if it's wooded in the back, and I don't know how feasible it's, but a fence there, but we definitely put a fence to contain the use.
Well, let's just be specific as to where, what we're gonna do with the fencing.
So.
Maybe we'll let Mr. Halper look at the plan?
Yeah, that's.
And advise, because I don't think he can answer that question.
Yes.
Just, I just wanna, just make sure I'm clear. The use and this type of education and the style of what's going on in this application is the same exact as your last testimony in April, right? So the only thing that changes, obviously, your school, you see the potential of the school attracting more students. You want to be able to provide for that, and you also want to be able to provide more land, right?
Correct.
So we're basically doubling the size of the land but adding twenty students. We have fifty now. We want the ability to add twenty more or seventy.
And let me just ask, when you, had you, before you bought the second lot, or I guess maybe even after you bought it, did you try to maybe maximize the first lot with more students on the first lot before you bought this?
No, we, we sort of feel, even for the existing approval of fifty students, that we'd benefit from having, you know, a larger property with two separate structures.
Is that something that you currently have in your Lakewood property, a lot of walking space outdoors?
We have about, it's a smaller lot there, but we do have a large backyard for Lakewood standards, let's say, right?
I hear. And recreation is an, is an active part of the girls' schedule?
So there's not much outdoor activity. I mean, there's a basketball court presently at the site, and that's what we anticipate continuing, and then there's, you know. And then there's, you know, a lot of just organized, you know, games or sporting activities outside, but not much in the way of, like, improvements for, you know, for any athletic activities.
Right, and I'm assuming, because I know this is something which is important to the neighborhood over there, you plan on leaving the outdoors the way it is. You know, you don't plan on just putting up fields and baseball fields and everything else. You plan on just leaving the natural outdoors for the girls to take walks and enjoy.
Correct.
No soccer.
No soccer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There's actually, I think it's like a horse field over there, so you could maybe play there, but we're not doing anything more than that.
Thank you.
Mr. Marza?
Now, you said you have, there's a break in July and August. Is that, is there nobody going to be at the school, or is it a summer camp?
No, nobody, no summer camp.
And when is, what is the plan as far as timing from when you're going to be getting ready to have the girls come into the school?
So, I...
Mr. Halpert might be able to answer that better, only because it's all dependent on our outside agency approvals. So, that's why he hasn't done anything to the other side. I'm not sure he has them all yet. And then we came in with this project, and so it kind of delayed everything.
As soon as we're able to begin construction, we would. And we'll take care of the property in the meantime. I know, to be honest, last time I was here, one of the neighbors mentioned that there were tenants there who were noisy. So, it was rented initially, and we decided not to rent it, so make sure that we didn't have any nuisance coming from there. But obviously, that leaves an abandoned structure, which maybe causes other issues that we're concerned.
I can understand waiting for the agencies, but it seems to me that you could be taking care of the outside of both buildings. That's your responsibility. You have to, you have to remember, people, I drove through that community. People care about their homes. And we made it clear when you were here previously that those, that that house would fit in with the neighborhood. Now, it does not fit in with the neighborhood. So, it's important. Anyone else on the board have any questions before we move on?
What are the age of the students? What's the age brackets of the students?
So, it's high school, so, you know, 12, 13 to 18, yeah.
Mr. Clea?
Thank you. Did I hear that should the board approve it, I know we're going to consolidate the properties, but will there be an effort for the architectural treatments to so the two schools look alike?
I'm not sure what's proposed for the facade, but my understanding is that we were going to try to just leave it as much as is to just maintain the residential look of it.
The architect may be able to answer that better for you, so why don't we wait for Ms. Ruben to come up?
Okay. And the variety of accessory structures that are on the site, are they planned to be removed?
Yes, they're going to be removed. I indicated that in my opening.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Peters, anything from you? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Don't go too far.
Don't go too far. I'm sure there'll be questions. I get the sense.
Mr. Halpert, if you can come on up? And I know you've been listening to the questions, so hopefully you incorporate some of those answers into your testimony.
All right. It's working. There we go. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Please state your name and spell your last to the record.
Eric Halpert, H.A.L.P.E.R.T., Licensed Professional Engineer in the state of New Jersey. I prepared these plans, and I have testified before this board several times.
Welcome, Mr. Halpert. Nice to see you again.
Good evening.
Okay, Mr. Halpert, if you could just describe the site and the area around the site, and I know you were the engineer on the original application as well, so if you can walk us through that, and if you're going to rely on any exhibits, please identify them for the record.
The board is looking at Exhibit A1, which is an aerial of the site, showing both sites indicated on Bassel Street. The subject property is located on the easterly side of Bassel Street. The previous application involved 417 Bassel Street. The current application is 425 Bassel Street. The area is largely residential. It is located in the RD1 zone within the Pine Lands. And the applicant is seeking to convert the existing single-family dwelling into a school use, as previously mentioned. Can you go to the next exhibit, please? The next sheet. The board is looking at a combined site plan with the previous site plan and the current site plan to discuss what the applicant is proposing to do on the current site. The applicant is looking to convert, as mentioned, the existing single-family dwelling. All parking requirements that are created from the new proposed school use within the proposed, within the existing single-family dwelling that is being converted to a, to the school use is being provided on the adjacent lot. As mentioned earlier, the lots are going to be consolidated, and the plans are going to be corrected to show the consolidated lots and the zoning of the two lots combined. The applicant is proposing to maintain the existing driveway and expand the existing driveway for emergency access only. There was a comment regarding how the access point can be ensured to be used only by fire and not by any of the staff members or anybody else. I did speak with the fire official to ask him his preference recently, and the, he suggested a gate with a Knox padlock that the fire official, the fire, fire will have access to, and that would prevent anybody from accessing the site. However, there will be the ability for fire to access the site. As we do, we would want access for fire directly from the streets. Details could be worked out with the board engineer, but I believe that would satisfactorily satisfy the board in ensuring that there will not be any of the commercial activity access via the 425 Bassel Street driveway. It will only be served, it will only be serving emergency access. As shown on the plan, the applicant is proposing to widen the existing gravel driveway in order to provide access to fire. The fire official has reviewed the plan, has approved the plan. There was a comment regarding the existing state of the current gravel driveway and any, there are areas which are, do not exhibit full depth gravel, and as part of the expansion, the gravel driveway can be fully, can be reconstructed as needed, if that would be to the board's satisfaction. I don't believe an asphalt driveway is needed. If the board would require an asphalt driveway, the applicant would be willing, but a gravel driveway would be preferable, would fit with the, fit in better with the neighborhood and would suffice for the fire purposes only. It is not going to be used for commercial purposes. The site plan, the combined site plan shows the parking, again, the single operating, previously approved site plan, which I believe is limiting the amount of disturbance. There is considerable, there's considerable amount of wooded area, and by ensuring that the only access to, the only commercial driveway being used is essentially the current driveway at 417 Bassel Street, that would be limiting the amount of trees being cut down for the project and in general, leaving more wooded area. And so, the applicant is proposing the single driveway previously approved under 417 Bassel will be the only commercial, commercially operating driveway, and will provide the parking as per the parking calculation, where 23 are required and 27 are provided at one space per three students. As indicated previously, the two sites are going to be functioning together. And again, it will be a condition of approval to consolidate the lots. Students are going to be bused all via transport van generally to the 417 Bassel Street site, and there is an interconnecting walkway to allow the students access to the 425, to the, these additional 20 students at the 425, 425 address, which is this application will be able to walk from the 417 site to the 425 site. Additionally, the refuse pickup is going to, is only at 417 Bassel Street. And there was a comment to provide an enclosure on 425, and the applicant agrees to that. The refuse pickup will be at 417 Bassel Street, and at certain intervals, the refuse will be brought over to 417 for the garbage pickup. Any food deliveries, to clarify, any food deliveries will be again at the 417 Bassel Street site, and again, walked over, there is, there is going to be, a path is proposed between the two sites.
And just so the record's clear, the original application on 417 Bassel Street, the only change to the plan is the walking path?
Correct. That is the only change that is proposed.
Otherwise, everything else that we see on that plan on that lot was already approved by the board?
Yes. Can you go to, can you go to the next sheet, please? This is a colored rendering of the landscaping. There was a comment regarding buffering, and the tree expert will be requiring additional buffering plantings along the property line, and the applicant agrees to provide additional buffering. There is considerable existing vegetation, but inasmuch as there are, these are deciduous trees, there will be additional buffering plantings to provide screening, and the applicant is going to comply with any comments from the licensed tree expert and work together with the licensed tree experts. Regarding, can you go back? I'm sorry. Can you go back to the previous sheet, Anthony? I'm sorry. Regarding sidewalk, as mentioned, I believe, earlier, as stated in the statement of operations, the students will not be allowed to walk to the site. The students are going to be brought by van. There will be a small percentage brought by the parents by car, but either way, students will not be walking to the site. And so, the applicant is not proposing sidewalk along the property frontage, as there is no connecting sidewalk on either side, and would be requesting a waiver. I believe that putting sidewalk without sidewalk on either side would not be appropriate, and a waiver is requested. If the board wishes to not grant the waiver, the applicant is willing to place the sidewalk, but a contribution to the pedestrian fund, I believe, is appropriate for this site, where there is no sidewalk to connect. So, the applicant is seeking a waiver from providing sidewalk and would contribute to the pedestrian fund.
Mr. Bernstein?
Would the applicant be okay if the board would request a sidewalk over there?
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Campbell, if we could have that conversation?
There is no sidewalk anywhere else, so it's going to kind of make it stand out if you wanted to blend in with the neighborhood.
Correct. And I guess that is definitely a question that we probably want to have with the neighbors, but we, as a governing body, we're seeing increasing requests almost daily for sidewalks, and I don't want to turn around and have that conversation with the neighbors.
And I wonder if it might be safer to have them go from one building to the other on a sidewalk than...
Closer to the street as opposed to in the middle of the lot?
Well, it's a street where nobody drives down there. I mean, it is really rural, quite rural. It's not on a busy street. So, you know, when they're, I'm thinking about a path in the rain and sleet and snow and slush, and, you know, that's not particularly safe either. So, it's a thought.
The thinking had been, the thinking had been rather provide internal walkways as opposed to something closer to the street. However, the applicant is completely open to following the board's directive if the board would...
You know, we've been encouraging, and we get, I happened to be at the zoning board the other night, and people are begging for sidewalks. So, rather than going backward, we'll go forward.
Madam Chair?
You don't have to...
Madam Chair?
You'll have your time to speak, sir. This is not it. We're doing this at this time.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Brazzi?
The sidewalk issue, many years has been a subject. If the pedestrian fund is used properly, in this case, there's no sidewalks either side. It's really rural nature, and in a case, I don't think it helps nothing if they have to be walking on a shoulder with no sidewalk and coming to a sidewalk. The question to the council and the governing body is what are they doing with the pedestrian fund? There's a lot of places in town that really need sidewalks where they fit in and are needed more. And that's why I get confused as how to weigh something like this. Right now, at the initial conversation of this, with nothing on either side for a good distance of sidewalks, I would lean personally, one person, against the sidewalks and the pedestrian fund. I would also ask the council to start watching where the pedestrian funds are and where we can apply those funds, which was the intent of that being done, to the places where we need it in the town. So, that's, it's a good balance both ways. It's very hard to reach. And I usually use, like, in this case here, out of the sidewalk, nowhere is in sight out there. Bassel Street, Bass Street out there, there's, they don't even know what concrete is. And in this case, I personally, if it goes to the fund, and the fund's being used properly in town for redoing sidewalks and putting where we need it, I think that's the idea of the fund and would fit here. That's my opinion only. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, just to address the board's concern, I think it goes to the character of the neighborhood. So, if you want to take the character of the neighborhood into consideration when you're making this decision, I mean, that's predominantly the philosophical balance that we're dealing with here. Now, you don't want it to stick out. You don't want to put something in that's not consistent with the rest of the character of the neighborhood. You know, and at the same point, the potential funds that could go into the sidewalk, neighborhood fund could potentially be utilized in a different area of the township for better use. So, that's the balancing test that the board's got to take into consideration.
Taking into consideration the character of the neighborhood, I would say, is it possible that you can beef up the connection between the two properties? It needs to be a solid sidewalk in, inside the property going from 417 to 425.
You're looking for a concrete sidewalk within interconnecting...
Yes, going directly from 417 to 425. Internal into the property where you have it marked off right now.
The applicant would agree to that.
Good.
We are. The Pine Lands generally prefers bluestone gravel. In order to come in front of the board, we needed to secure a certificate of filing. Plans have been submitted. Plans have been submitted, were submitted both for the previous application and for this application. For this application, it was showing, of course, the bluestone. For the previous application, it was showing full asphalt for the driveway. On residential applications, they always will request that the driveway be bluestone. On commercial applications, we have received and were required to receive in order to appear before the board, the certificate of filing where the application showed the driveway to be asphalt. The reason why I proposed bluestone gravel is because the Pine Lands does prefer bluestone gravel in order not to, in order, in order not to, I said the applicant would agree to provide concrete sidewalk, it may be better to say the applicant would agree to propose concrete sidewalk as long as the Pine Lands will not deny that. I do not believe the Pine Lands will deny that. This is a commercial application, and concrete sidewalk makes sense.
Now, I know the Pine Lands won't give you a letter of fulfillment until you get approved. We gotta approve it first here.
And, did you, on your first site, get approved from them yet? Because you have your approval on a first site. Did you get approval from the Pine Lands yet?
We have, the status of the first application is there as the, as this application, as the applicant was dealing with this application, there was a delay in finalizing those plans as this application is coming up, and so, we have not finalized the resolution compliance of those plans, and we are in receipt of the certificate of filing. We do not have the final approval. Should the board grant approval this evening, we will proceed with finalizing both resolution compliances of both applications.
And now, Mr. Sullivan just mentioned, in compliance, you know, staying in the character of the neighborhood with the sidewalks, I'd like to go back to Dr. Campbell's comment about straightening the place up with the character of the neighborhood and maintain that building better.
The applicant will do that.
Mr. Trummer.
All right, I'm gonna give you the fire department perspective. The existing school already has a paved blacktop driveway.
Correct.
It's basically a U shape.
Yeah.
For safety reasons, I would think you need at least a 20-foot wide blacktop driveway that comes in and gives a fire truck an angle of two sides of that building, minimum, because it's a school. You also, I believe it should be interconnected to two driveways, make it one big U. The other leg of it that comes out, that could be your access road, your emergency, with the gates if you want to do that, but you're gonna have kids walking back and forth. Again, you have, I consider if you have to evacuate the school, plus you have snowy days, rainy days, icy, you don't want these kids walking through the grass or anything else. Where if you have a blacktop driveway, it can be plowed, can be maintained, safety, access 20 feet wide. You can't guarantee me that that gravel driveway will hold up a 90,000-pound fire truck if they have to put their jacks down. Where a compacted 20-foot paved U-shaped driveway, you really won't have to take very many trees down, because I've been there, and it's a very depressed area around it where you're gonna have to stabilize a lot to make it work. So, I believe a paved driveway would be the way to go. And now, instead of worrying about the kids walking around on sidewalks, it may alleviate that issue too, because you have a driveway for them to walk around.
The, the plan, just for the record, the plan has been reviewed by the fire official, and the fire official has approved. The applicant is willing, are, to clarify, there were a few points. You're asking for access to the rear of the building also for the fire truck, was it...
No, not the rear.
Side.
Because if you're looking at the house, if they pull up this way, it's a limited angle, where if it comes across a little bit and catches the two corners, fire truck can stop right here, and they have full, it's called scrub area. They can reach all the corners of the house with the ladder, and it also gives enough room for everything to get around. It doesn't block it off.
So, and so you're asking for the, the access between the two, the two properties?
It should be a big loop in my eyes.
A big loop.
20-foot paved driveway, this way people can walk, access, because you're gonna do your parking up anyhow. Gravel is not safe. I understand the whole pine lands part of it, but can you plow a gravel driveway that well?
So, the, the thinking had been, so the applicant is willing to certainly widen it to provide access for the fire before getting into the gravel or the asphalt. So, the, the thinking for the presentation of the two properties had been, one commercial driveway is keeping it to a minimum. This was deliberate to maintain, again, the look of the neighborhood. We had the previous approval, we're going to, the applicant wishes to maintain one commercial driveway. However, of course, the applicant needs to provide fire access, and so, the set, the driveway that we are discussing at 425, that is accessing the street at 425 that we are discussing to expand right now, is only serving fire, and I do believe gravel would suffice. The applicant is willing to provide asphalt as long as the Pine Lands would be willing and on a commercial application, as the Pine Lands previously approved the 417 Bassel site with, with asphalt. I do believe the Pine Lands would...
I believe if you go back, if you go back to the fire official, I believe he would agree with me, once it's out there. He gave you the bare minimum. The driveway you have right now...
Mr. Trummer, you can't be heard, so you have to get closer to the mic. The audience cannot hear you.
The driveway you have right now, how wide is that, the paved one?
The paved driveway that we're proposing at 417?
Right, you're considering the commercial driveway.
That is 20 feet.
It's 20 feet wide?
I'm sorry. It is 24.
It's 24 feet wide.
I remember it being a little narrower than that, because I actually drove up it with my pickup truck.
I'm, I'm referring to the proposed, to what we're proposing.
No, 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 what you have there now. You're saying that the paved driveway in the adjoining property...
We haven't made those improvements yet.
We are discussing the proposed improvements. The existing condition, I, I'll measure, I can tell you what the existing...
But that was a residential home.
It is right now a residential home. It is a residential home right now. What I'm referring to is the proposed improvements, not the existing condition.
It's narrow.
The existing driveway is approximately 12 feet wide, but, but that is the existing driveway, and the applicant is proposing to expand it to 20 feet to comply, to ensure that a fire truck will access it.
No, absolutely. 20 feet is the bare minimum that we need for a fire truck. But, like I'm saying, you have to, if you did a long sweeping driveway between the two buildings, I think it rectifies a lot of your problems.
So, the applicant certainly is willing to do the long sweeping driveway with gravel, and I think we can, there, just to point out, there's a benefit to keeping the gravel in order to, again, keep with the neighborhood. We were attempting to limit the amount of commercial look by keeping the one commercial driveway and the one asphalt. If the board would like asphalt, since this is the Pine Lands, we would certainly request that we demonstrate that we propose it to the Pine Lands. If they do not want it, then we would want to be assured that that will not be a condition. We could propose it, but just to explain, the thinking had been, the gravel is more with the look of the neighborhood, and...
I'll disagree, I'll disagree with that, because I went up and down that street, and many of the driveways were blacktop.
If this is, the applicant is willing to propose asphalt to the Pine Lands, yes.
No problem.
Okay. And just to be clear, if Pine Lands turns around and says it's not within the character of the neighborhood, kinda is what it is.
And, and to clarify, if we, if we're proposing asphalt, then very likely, there is a possibility it's going to trigger stormwater management as well, and we're going to have to put stormwater management. We're going to have to either increase the stormwater management facilities that are currently at 417 if we're going to connect it, or more likely, we're going to have to put some stormwater management facilities at the 425 site. So, I do believe that the, that the current application as shown is certainly sufficient for fire, and fire approved it, and providing asphalt would make it more commercial in terms of both the asphalt and the stormwater facilities that would have to be provided.
Fire doesn't usually get involved.
I'm sorry?
Fire doesn't usually get involved whether it's gravel or pavement, because that wasn't in his purview. I'm sure if that comes up to him now, he will give you his recommendation would be very different.
I did, the fire official I spoke with and is aware that it's gravel and is okay, but...
It's okay, for now, until you do your improvements, but, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, 100%. The applicant, if the, if the, if the board wishes, then the applicant certainly, yes.
I think it should be...
Lots from the board. Do we, do we want to encourage asphalt, some pervious coverage that may cause more issues for the Pine Lands situation?
Madam Chair, I think the simple answer is, and I think the professionals, you're dealing with the Pine Lands, that's like getting a constant moving target. I think the proposal of they will go to the Pine Lands and request it, and then the Pine Lands gets the final call no matter what.
That's fine.
I think that's the only way to really settle, is that if they're willing to go and will commit to a resolution applying to the Pine Lands for the asphalt, and then their final decision is gonna rest on the outside agency, the Pine Lands.
Right.
I think that's the only way that can be done properly.
That's good, that's fine. We're in agreement then.
So, just to clarify, so what we're proposing here is an asphalt driveway at 425, going up to the house at 425 that's gonna be converted to a school, but it's not gonna be connecting with 417's driveway? Or is it?
Well, Mr. Trummer's proposing a sweeping driveway that connects both, both buildings.
And you are, and you're okay with that?
I don't think we're okay with the connecting, because then we'd have to take a bunch of trees down.
There aren't a lot of trees there.
There really aren't that many trees there. This was a horse farm.
If, if, if the app, if the board would, believes that that is to the benefit of the application, the applicant would be willing to do that.
And as, as Mr. Trummer points out, then that could be a walking area from school to school.
Yeah, that would alleviate the need for the concrete driveway.
A walkway.
Walkway, excuse me.
Madam Chair. Regarding the impervious coverage, if we're doing this circular driveway, you're actually gonna be deleting one of them from the current, from the previous application, right? So, your impervious coverage should stay somewhat the same, perhaps slightly more. The way I see it, if you're just doing one large U between both properties, is that what we're talking about? Your impervious coverage should stay somewhat similar.
You're right. I'm sure you'll be communicating with our professionals.
We will have to work out the details, and we will, we will discuss more as this testimony continues.
That sounds good.
Could I just jump in as far as the Pine Lands go? The applicant's correct that they applied for a certificate of filing for what you see, and that, and the Pine Lands issued the certificate of filing. The next step of that is a no call-up letter, which the Pine Lands wants to say, okay, we saw what was originally approved, but now, how did the board approval change it? Or they're gonna look at a loop driveway where they're gonna see additional pavement, and it probably will trigger additional stormwater management. It's just part of, if you want the no call-up letter, you have to address that. But it's, I don't think it's anything, well, we'll ask the Pine Lands and see what they say.
Good, good. Thank you, thank you. Any other questions? Any other things you have to say, sir?
I do have a little bit more testimony, yes. Anthony, could you pull up the site plan, the plan set? Could you go to sheet two? Could you zoom in just a little bit to the general site, to the rear of the property? The board is looking at the existing conditions plan with numerous accessory structures and certain dirt roads. The applicant is proposing to remove all the accessory structures. The dirt road, there was no indication to remove it, it is dirt. The applicant has no use for it, and if the board wish, if the board would like, the applicant is willing to seed and make sure that it is vegetated with cover. That was not shown on the plan, however, the applicant would agree to do that, should the board...
I think that would be aesthetically preferable.
And there will be no longer any dirt roads.
Quick, quick question for you. The pathways, are they easements held by the neighbors, or is that just a, what is that?
Are you referring to the, to the paths, to the other, to the other properties, not between our two properties? Is that what you're asking?
The pathways which lead, looks like they lead on to...
Horse trails or bike, people just probably just use them over time as motorcycle, four-wheelers.
Encroached.
I don't think there's formal easements, no, there's nothing in the title work.
No, nothing.
Everyone's just back there driving around.
Gotcha. It's just a nice hiking path.
And just to go through the review letters, I touched on a few of the comments. So regarding the letter from the, from Mr. Peters, from the board planner dated October 28th, so the applicant is going to consolidate the lots, and the plans will be corrected to demonstrate the lots being consolidated with the zoning so showing. The applicant is not proposing ground-mounted signage, and any wall signs will be limited. The architect will speak more to that, and any wall signs will be limited to the zoning ordinance, what is permitted. We do have our traffic engineer here, and I will let traffic discuss any traffic comments. Regarding the landscaping, the land tree expert is asking for additional screening and changing some of the, some of the trees that are proposed, and the applicant is going to comply with all, with the requirements of the landscaping ordinance, and does not need any variances As indicated, the refuse collection is from the 417 site. This is a minor site plan, and to go through some of the comments from the board engineer, there is a septic system on site, a septic system, and well is proposed. The plans were submitted to the environmental commission, and there have been no comments As part of resolution compliance, if the board is going to be requiring that the driveway be paved, there may be a require, it may turn, I can, any stormwater management that will result as, that will come as, that will be required as a result of this amendment will be addressed during resolution compliance. The technical revisions the applicant will, is able to comply with, and that would conclude my testimony.
Thank you. We can move on.
Okay, great. At this time, we'd like to call up the architect.
Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Please state your name and spell your last with the record.
My name is Melissa Rubb, last name R-U-B. I'm a graduate of the City College of New York School of Architecture and I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey. I oversaw the preparation of the drawings being presented tonight, and I have had the privilege of testifying before this and other municipal boards throughout the state.
Welcome back.
Thank you very much. Tonight I'll be presenting the architectural proposal for Shava High School. As previously described, we are proposing interior modifications to convert the existing two and a half single-story, sorry, two and a half-story, single-family home into a high school for girls. I will outline the architectural plans and compliance measures for the project. So Anthony, if we can go over to the first sheet of the architectural set, please. No, that's the civil set. If we can just hop over to the architectural set. That's it. Perfect. Thank you very much. I don't know if the exhibit was pre-marked. Do you know what letter we're up to? Or this, this was a previously given to the board, so would it be marked as an exhibit? I just want to be clear.
You can mark it as A4.
Okay, great. Thank you. So this is exhibit A4, the floor plans for the proposed school. The building is comprised of 4,667 square feet, distributed with 1,305 square feet at the basement, 2,095 square feet at the first floor, and 1,267 square feet at the second floor. The building is 22 feet, 4 inches to the center of the highest gable. If we could just zoom in slightly to the basement plan, please. The basement has two administrative offices. Thank you, that's perfect. Two administrative offices over here and here with some storage in between, and is accessed via the interior stairwell at the center and a rear stairwell in the back. The first floor has a lobby, one classroom, a therapy room, office, a break room for staff, bathroom, lounge, some additional office space, and kitchen storage in the center. There, we are adding an ADA ramp to this, to the front entrance, that's right over here. And the existing wooden deck in the rear of the building will remain. Note that the cooking appliances in the kitchen will be removed and the space that is the kitchen now will serve for staff only, for preparation for themselves. At the second floor, we are proposing one classroom, two group therapy rooms, and one bathroom. Anthony, if we can go over to the rendering, please. So that was a separate exhibit. Yeah, these are the building elevations, but there was also a colored rendering.
Excuse me, what's going to take place in the basement?
The basement is just for admin, so there's two offices down there and some storage. The rest of it is going to remain unfinished or, you know, semi-finished, but not for student use.
Thank you.
Sure. Was there a colored rendering that was sent over? Oh, sorry, it's in the first A4, you think? Okay, sorry. That would be the fourth sheet in that packet. Thank you. Yep, that's the one. Perfect. Thank you so much. So this is exhibit A4, or did we use A4 already?
Well, for floor plans, we don't really.
Okay, so sorry, let's rename this A5. I'm sorry for the confusion. At the exterior, the building's elevations will be in line with the residential neighborhood. The vinyl siding will be replaced as needed along with a shingle roof to keep the character of the neighborhood and to maintain cohesion to the sister building next door. There is no building-mounted signage proposed at this location. In terms of some code compliance issues that I want to cover, the building is fully, will be fully sprinkled in compliance with fire safety regulations. As for egress, again, the basement has two means of egress that I previously described, and the first floor as well, a door in the front and a door in the back. The second floor is classified by code as a space with one exit and meets the following criteria, which is less than 49 occupants at the second floor and a common path of travel of less than 75 feet to, at which point you would get to two means of egress, and it is therefore, again, a space with one exit. In terms of ADA compliance, again, we are proposing an ADA ramp and ADA compliant bathrooms to the first floor. All doorways and pathways will meet accessibility standards per New Jersey's rehab code. This is, that concludes my direct testimony.
Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Real quick, as far as the exterior, I think you'd indicated that the siding, maybe the roofings, will be replaced if needed. Who decides if needed?
So we definitely want a beautiful, you know, exterior. This is, the image on the screen is, is what the, you know, product will look like at the end. You know, the siding, again, if it's in good condition, will be cleaned up and, and made to be, and we will be sure to make sure that it's in good condition, and if not, it'll be replaced.
Why not just re-side the whole building?
We can do that.
Thank you.
Mr. Peters, anything from you?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
At this time, I'd like to call up the traffic engineer, Mr. Ray.
Pretty sure you sleep here.
Yeah. I'll be back.
You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Please state your name, spell your last with the record.
John Ray, R-E-A, Principal with McDonough and Ray Associates, testifying on traffic.
Welcome again.
Thank you.
And John, just for the record, your office, you've visited the site and the area around the site?
I did. I visited the site, you know, looked at the site plan and did prepare a brief traffic statement on the additional traffic impact that will be generated by the proposal.
Okay, and why don't you describe your findings?
Well, very simply, I'm going to be brief. This is going to be a school for 20 students. They are going to be bused in transport vans. It's going to be connected with the site at 417 Basso, which has already been approved for 50 students. So essentially, what we're looking at is perhaps one or two additional transport vans and several parking spaces that will be required for staff and for parents that may drop off to children. So we're really looking at perhaps five additional peak hour trips, minimal impact. I said I'd be brief.
Good. That, that, the end of your professional, and is that then, I think we'll open it to the public now, please?
Okay, okay.
Now, there'll be two sections, ladies and gentlemen. First, you may ask questions of the professionals that have testified. No general statements, no comments. This is purely for questioning. When you're finished with that portion, then the second portion will be for comments or general concerns. All right? If anyone would like to question any of the wit, any of the professionals who just testified, please come forward.
All right. Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Please state your name and spell your last with the record.
Kimberly Zanger, S as in Sam, C as in zebra, A-N-G-E-R, at 1458 Jordan Avenue.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for pointing out the deplorable situation at 417 Basso. It's been very difficult driving past that house after having the meeting that we had in May, April. I want to just, if I may, shed some light on the flood.
Yep.
I can't do that. Okay.
Excuse me. This is, at this portion.
Just questions.
Just questions.
Got it.
Thank you so much. Then you can come back up later.
So my first question is, I'm not sure who it would be directed to, possibly the president of the school. If you bought 417 Basso in January of '23 and then bought this 425 Basso in August of '23, and we were only discussing this in April of '24, why wasn't this plan shared with us at that point?
Thank you. That's a fair question. The answer is that we weren't sure that we were going to be able to afford to develop both sites and get this project done. Initially, we were, you know, considering holding it or renting it out or something like that and keeping it for future use, and then we decided to come ahead and try to expand the project a little bit.
So am I allowed to ask a question in addition to that now?
Yeah.
So my question to that, though, is mathematically, your spots, your parking spots, line perfectly with 70 students. So you're raising your right hand and telling the truth supposedly, and that's concerning. I then have another question. Did you, or did you not now buy the property on the other side of 417?
No.
Last week?
No.
Because the concern by the residents is that that street is then going to go through to Jackson Trails. So the neighbors are definitely concerned about that.
So we'll be clear. You have not purchased more property in that vicinity.
We own a property across the street, 418 Basso, which we've owned for a while and have no intention of developing. The school at this time is rented, but the other property that you mentioned, we haven't purchased. We haven't purchased anything since our original purchases.
Unfortunately, I can't access those documents, but it does say pending.
It's not really relevant.
Yeah, just to be clear.
It is if you live there.
All right. Hang, hang on, hang on, hang on, just so we, we can set the sandbox that we're playing in here. So what happens with an application in front of a planning board, the, pursuant to the, I mean, the Spillaneus Law, the sandbox that we have to plan has to be relevant to the application before us. We can't start taking pieces of property that may or may not be even under the control of this owner or a different corporation or anything like that. So it's, so it's got to be relevant to, you can ask whatever you want, but it's got to be relevant to what's in front of us.
So my next question is, a lot of the residents had concerns about the water table and flooding, and one question would be, are you going to put in a commercial septic system to house and deal with additional people now in these buildings?
That's a site engineer's question. So, Mr. Halper, if you could come up and address that, please?
Yes, as part of the previous application, the septic system was proposed and a new separate septic system on this property is proposed.
But is it commercial? Because that's a lot of people using.
There is no, septic system is not classified necessarily as residential or commercial. It, there are certain requirements that the septic system needs to meet, and the septic system proposed meets the requirements and is going to be, the proposal is conditioned on approval by the Board of Health.
Excuse me.
Wait, we might have.
Sir, I have one other question. On that septic system being in the pinlands, would you be subject to their requirements for the septic systems they require sometimes, the pressure system?
The entire application, including the septic system, is certainly subject.
But that's a totally different septic system that the pinlands usually requires. But you would be exposed to that and you would comply with that?
We, the, the application is required to comply with the pinlands' requirements. In this instance, I believe the system you're referring to, the amphidrom system, which you are familiar with, is actually, in certain instances, not allowed. And by not allowing, what is being ensured is that it limits the amount of people that can be using the system and attempt to have an application approved for, because the amphidrom system allows for a greater amount of people. So in this area and in certain areas within the pinlands, what's called the pilot, the amphidrom system, cannot be used. And either way, the applicant is obligated and does comply with the requirements of the pinlands.
Ma'am, I have one thing to say to you. You brought up something that I've watched for many years up here, and years ago we used to call it the creeping crud. And that's trying to watch what's happening around the property that we're talking about tonight and the rest, and we cannot look at that. I agree with your concerns there, but that's not in our purview by Ms. Spillaneus Law and the oath that we took for this board. So I concur at your thoughts, but we can't do nothing about that, ma'am.
Who can?
I know.
All the previously discussed agreements with the buffers, the hours of operation, no full-time residents, that the lights would be off at a decent hour, no parking on the streets, those are going to carry over to the new dwelling as well.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you.
And just to, maybe just kind of ease your mind a little bit. So what happens to the pinlands is that when it comes down to the septic units, so it has to go through multiple jurisdictions of approval. The pinlands actually has stricter standards when it comes to that than some other areas and some other situations. So they have to disclose how many people are on the property. In fact, they already have, I believe, through their certificate, that they've already sent in and had approval for. So they can't kind of do a bait and switch, right, or else they'll be, they'll be knocked in the head pretty hard, right? So when it happens, they have to then go and get the required system that pinlands mandates pursuant to like their own administrative code, and that's typically of a higher standard than that in, in non-pinlands areas. So it's kind of hard to wrap your head around, but like it's an additional checks and balancing system, so to speak, because they want those areas to be pristine. So they can't do a bait and switch with the numbers, they just can't.
Is there somebody I can contact directly on the board in the event that they do not do the maintenance that's necessary? Because they've left the windows open and the screens out.
So you got two things. So you can contact code enforcement, right? Have a, have a sit down, have a chat with them, and just, you know, let them know what you see, what's going on. Alternatively, if you're still, you know, worried about the pinland situation, you can call pinlands up directly and, and just have maybe somebody in legal explain to you the exact in and outs of that type of situation. They're pretty receptive, and they're not the easiest people in the world to get on the phone, but when you do, they're, they're semi, they're semi-receptive, so.
Thank you.
Right?
Also, ma'am, the Pinland Commission has monthly meetings also open to the public that you can go down to. I would argue with the attorney that they're sometimes receptive, but that's something else. But you're open to the public and they're good meetings to go to, and maybe if they hear from other people and their concerns, they do address them. They are very particular about preserving the pinlands, especially the main core. We're on the outskirts of it, so they're a little looser on the outskirts than internally.
Well, and 425 has beautiful mountain laurel in the front yard that's going to be destroyed by all of this, and it's very sad because that's not a plant you can buy commercially. It's native to the pinlands.
But you can go to the pinlands meetings. I would encourage that.
Didn't we, in our first meeting, didn't we ask to preserve those on that property? I seem to remember that we.
There's more on 425 than there are on 417.
Well, we'll ask the same, because I believe that it might be against the law to remove a mountain laurel.
I thought so too. I tried to find something, but I couldn't.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pretty sure they're protected because I had the same issue on a house I owned in Jackson previously. So I'm sure that they will look into that and, and be concerned about that.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gary Fish.
Yep, please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Please state your name and spell your last with the record.
Gary Fish, F-I-S-H, 483 Basso Street.
Okay.
So I have two questions. Recently, we've been under a severe water restriction. How much water is going to be consumed daily, weekly, or monthly? Because we have already experienced during this drought, when you turn the water on to get water out of your well, it does not come out with any force that would normally be there. So water consumption is a big concern.
While I don't have the exact number for the water consumption, but for a school without showers, with a cafeteria is, I believe, 25. I'm not 100% sure. I'm not 100% sure right now, remembering offhand, but it is not a large amount of water consumption, because the school, the water consumption is a function of the student body and the staff, and this is a small amount of, a small student body and staff.
So, 50 women and then staff using the bathroom. I would think that the toilets are going to be the type that conserves water versus the old-fashioned toilet, which used gallons of water compared to the newer designs that are available today?
That would be, I don't know if that's something the applicant would like to stipulate, would like to have stipulated, but when you say water, what you meant is sewer demand? The sewer demand, again, is not a large sewer demand.
Yeah, if the applicant will stipulate the low flow, you know, that would be.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, the water consumption that the toilet feeds off of, and the sinks that are used to wash your hands, so on and so forth, I'm talking about water that comes out of the well. We're going to do everything possible to preserve the consumption of water?
Yes.
Thank you. The next question, only because of, and I know we can't talk specifically about any neighborhood, but the private schools that have transportation provided, so this is a traffic question. I know that everybody's in a hurry today. We see a large increase in auto accidents on a daily basis, to an increasing number that is mind-boggling. But these commuter vans that are bringing students to school race up and down the roads to get where they got to be, so they can go pick up other students or do what they have to do. Who is going to police, literally police, the 25 mile an hour speed limit in our neighborhood?
Yeah, I'm going to have to, so what happens is that the, literally, the police department has to, at least the traffic safety department has to enforce that. So, we can't impose almost like an enforcement mechanism on the busing miles per hour, that would be kind of heavily illegal from our point of view when it comes down to conditions of approval. So, it would have to be the police department to enforce whatever the speed limit is in that area. Unfortunately, there's not really an easy answer to what you're asking.
I've had experience where I have called the police department to put down those hoses across the road to check on traffic. They will do that for you. If you find that there is a problem on your, on that street presso coming in, they can set up a system to check the speed, and it might give you some relief to know that they're being professional and cautious.
All right, well, thank you.
So, what happens, Jackson Township has a specialized unit called the Traffic Safety Unit. You can call them up directly and just let them know your concerns, and they specifically look into situations like that.
All right, another comment on the grounds, the wetlands, the Pinelands that we are sometimes in, in that area. When that ground gets wet, and you drive a heavy-duty truck, because I've had them come to my house, like a dump truck, but a fire truck, I'm assuming, is a lot heavier, those trucks will sink into the wet ground after snow and rain. They will sink into the ground.
Don't give him any fodder.
Okay, they'll sink into the ground, two foot, three foot into the ground. So, the pavement that you've been talking about, and the base that you have to put down to hold and support a truck, is very important. If you haven't experienced it, you will experience it when that vehicle has to come in. So, hopefully, we take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
To close that portion.
Second, second Sullivan.
All in favor? Now, if anyone wishes to come up and speak about the project itself?
Just general comments?
Generalities, you're welcome to come forward.
Opinions, general comments?
Good evening, I'm Helen Ferraro, 1458.
Oh, hang on. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last with the record.
1458 Jordan Avenue, my name is Helen Ferraro. My husband and I purchased our piece of property in 1987, so we've had it a long time. And in 1987, our decision to buy that piece of property was to have this piece of land in Jackson Township, where the air was sweeter, because there were so many trees, everything was filtered, it was beautiful. And the land is getting raped. The trees are gone, there will be no more. I don't understand how anybody could let this happen. Even God himself wouldn't want this to happen. And I think it's a travesty, and I thank you, I'm done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Seeing no one else come forward, I move to close the public testimony portion of the application. Sullivan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any final words?
Well, you're essentially looking at an application for permitted use that has no variances, and I think the applicant has been very receptive to all the board members' comments, and is trying to work with you, and would respectfully request that the board grant an approval.
Seeking a motion?
I'll make a motion. It's a tough application, because you're taking a residential use and turning it into commercial use. I understand the concerns out here. However, it's also a complying application, and by the oath we take, that's what we have to go by. I think with the stipulations the applicant has agreed to, with the findings with the Pinelands, and recognizing how much of this will be governed by the decision of the Pinelands, I make a motion to approve it.
And, sure, just a clarification, and the stipulations, does that include this looped driveway?
Yeah, we're going to ask about it.
Yes, yes, it does.
Yes, it does.
So, we're going to be seeing revised plans that show this looped driveway, not only for the site that we're talking about tonight, but the prior approval.
Correct.
Thank you.
One other thing with the motion, I made that motion right now, it's with no sidewalks, I don't know if we went any further with that. So, I made a motion without sidewalks and paying to the pedestrian fund.
I'm going to, being that I've brought up the sidewalks before, I'm going to second that motion and second Mr. Brezzi about putting it into the fund. It was really just to engage in the conversation. I sense that the neighbor of us does not want sidewalks, and that's why I, at this point, but not necessary to have the sidewalks put into the fund, but we yes on the application.
And the administrator and you are going to watch some money in the pedestrian fund, thank you.
He didn't say that. All right, all right, we'll have a roll call vote, please. Mr. Brezzi?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes, as long as they go ahead and start addressing the maintenance concerns immediately. Thank you.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes, and I agree with Mr. Marzo about the improvements.
Mr. Tremmer?
Yes.
Mr. Weingart?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
I agree with my colleagues. While we have no enforcement arm when it comes to maintenance of the property, the township does. And I highly encourage any neighbor of this project that sees anything that is a code violation to please report it to code enforcement, so that it can be dealt with. And with that, I vote yes.
Dr. Campbell? Yes, congratulations.
Thank you so much. I hope everybody has a great holiday, and we'll see you in the near year.
Thank you. We'd like to move along to our next application. Sorry, folks, but we have four tonight, so.
This'll be a quick one, guys.
This, it should not take too long. Let's hope for the best. Figure Mr. Alfieri had to hang out here for the last three and a half hours.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary G. Kobe Alfieri, and Jacobs on behalf of the applicant. Thank you for sticking around for us. We'll be as brief as you allow us to be, in that what we're simply trying to do is convert an existing home into a house of worship. We have three witnesses, two of whom will be very brief, the engineer will be the lengthiest of the three. Do you want us to just jump into it, or do you want to hear from your professionals?
I always like to hear from our professionals, if they have something to say.
Yes.
And Mr. Peters agrees.
Yes, and to note that the three variances that are identified in the board professional reports are all existing conditions, we're not changing those. They're based on the size and shape of the property as it exists today. Mr. Halper, we're going to have to have you sworn in.
All right. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last with the record.
Eric Halpert, H-A-L-P-E-R-T, licensed professional engineer and planner.
You're good to go. Board accepts your question.
Yeah, we know.
And Mr. Halper, your office prepared this, what's called a minor site plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Would you, referring to the exhibits as they're put on the screen, would you identify first where this property is located, what the surrounding uses look like?
Yes, certainly. The property is located on the north side of Bethel Church Road. It is not too far, approximately 700, 650 feet from the intersection with South New Prospect Roadway. The subject property is located within the R1 zone to the rear. There are properties within the R15 zone. The project is located within an area that is both residentially developed and closer to the intersection. There are commercially developed properties, and it is the NC zone as you get closer to the, at the intersection. The site is called out, 864 Bethel Church Road.
And the site currently has a home with various residential improvements, correct?
The site, correct. The site is presently improved with a single-family dwelling with three existing non-conformities, the lot width is deficient, there is a front-back, a front-setback variance, it is at 35.1 feet, and there is a small sideyard setback of 19 feet where 20 feet is required.
And if the board would approve this application, the residential amenities such as the pool will be removed, so that only the house of worship and the associated driveway and parking would be located on the property?
Yes.
All right, you want to go to the next exhibit?
Yes, could you, can you please go to the next sheet? And can you zoom in a little more just to the plan? The board is looking at the minor site plan. The applicant is proposing to convert the existing single-family two-story dwelling to a place of worship with a, and with a floor, floor space of, the first floor is 1,178 square feet. The second floor, there is an overhang that is noted by certain dashed lines on the plan, so the second floor is slightly larger, it is at 1,386 square feet. 1,368 square feet. However, most of the portion is used by the proposed main san, is going to be used to be a main sanctuary. There are certain steps which are not included in the main sanctuary area, and so the parking calculation was used for a main sanctuary area of 1,297 square feet, which results in a parking requirement of 17, and 17 physical spaces are provided, with one of them as an EV, which counts as two spots, and so it is considered as 18 spots are proposed.
And there will also be ADA compliant parking as well?
ADA compliant parking is proposed as well. The applicant is not proposing any site signage. The applicant is proposing to improve the site with a two-way driveway, providing access to two parking areas totaling, as we've mentioned, 17 spaces, a refuse location. Fire has reviewed and approved the site. There is access on three sides, counting, there is access on three sides, the parking area provides two sides, the front of the property is near the roadway, the fire official has reviewed the plan and has approved. The application does not meet the requirements of the stormwater management rules. However, the applicant is proposing stormwater management measures due to the increase in impervious coverage, and the applicant will comply with the board engineer comments regarding soil testing and other technical revisions regarding the stormwater management.
You mentioned fire approval. There is a report dated December 4th, correct?
Correct.
There are comments within that report, you're prepared to address all of those comments?
Yes, there are comments in the report regarding placement of fire hydrant and NOx box.
But we'll comply with the comments.
And we could comply with the comments, but essentially, regarding the layout, the fire official has approved the layout.
Sight lighting and landscaping?
Regarding the sight lighting and landscaping, there is lighting that is proposed. The applicant will provide cutoff shields and will address the board comments regarding demonstrating to where the foot candles hit 0.0. The applicant, could you go to the next sheet, please? The applicant, this is a colored rendering of the, you could zoom into the plan, Anthony, thank you. The applicant is proposing landscaping and buffering. There are comments from the township tree expert, and the applicant is able to comply with the comments of the tree expert. There was a specific comment regarding providing more distance between the curb to the existing tree here, and the applicant is able to attempt to work with the tree expert and the board engineer to shift the driveway slightly by approximately a foot to provide more distance, and the existing trees in the rear of the property are going to be maintained.
And when you say tree expert, we're referring to CME report dated December 12 from Shari Svirar.
From Shari, correct, yes.
And there are landscape comments within the board professional, both the RVE and Owen Little reports, we'll address those as well?
Yes.
I'm sorry, continue, please. Septic or sanitary sewer?
This is, the project is going to be connecting to the public system and the MUA, the project is conditioned upon MUA approval.
And public water as well?
Public sewer and public water, yes.
Are there sidewalks?
There are, the, could you go back, there are sidewalks, could you go back to the previous sheet, please?
The, there are sidewalks on the street, correct?
There are sidewalks, and the applicant is going to improve the frontage.
That street, we need, yes, that, we need, over there, you need the sidewalk.
Yes, we will. They acknowledge they need them.
The plans show proposed sidewalk.
If you want, we'll install them.
Yes, and we do, and we want no parking signs on both sides of the street.
We can ask the governing body that's not in our, with our.
I understand that, but the biggest issue there is, there is a hill, I lived around the corner, I go by that every day, and there is a hill on the eastern side of that, there's very poor sight line. And if somebody comes over that rise, and their car is parked along there, it's going to be a nightmare. So, please, make every effort.
If the board grants you approval, a condition could be that we will petition the mayor and governor.
Both sides of the road.
Yep, on both sides. But again, it's the governing bodies' call, not our call.
I understand, I'll be putting in my plug with the governing body.
Okay. And then, in terms of, instead of going point by point with the board professional reports, all the technical comments you would agree to address as a condition of approval?
Yes. Yes.
So if there's anything that Ernie or Doug, if you want us to hit specifically, we will. Otherwise, engineering's finished.
I have to give, so, should I do that later?
I think you, and, and you may want, we have to put a planning testimony to support the variances. I don't know if you wanna hear that now, or if you wanna hear first the architecture and then.
You're here, you're sitting in that seat. Let's make the most of it. Not a lot of moving around, we're gonna do this quickly.
The applicant is seeking variances regarding the front yard setback variance, side yard setback variance, and lot width. There may be a variance as well regarding the driveway jutting slightly because of the building. There is a certain section where.
And those are existing conditions.
Except for the driveway.
Except for the driveway.
What I mentioned until now is existing conditions. The driveway, there is a certain, the driveway generally maintains the 10 feet near where the building exists. The driveway juts to approximately 6.3 feet at its closest to the property, which may be a variance under the new place of worship ordinances. And the applicant is seeking variances from those variance relief. And I believe that variance relief can be granted under both C1 hardship and C2. C1 hardship, this application involves a specific piece of property with a structure that is lawfully existing. The existing non-conformities are not going to change. The site is narrow, that drives the lot width variance. The existing placement of the structure results in the front and side yard setback variance. I would argue also that the placement of the driveway that we just mentioned, a portion of which would appear to require the relief from the place of worship requirement, is also a C1 because it is driven only by the site's narrowness and existing structure.
And will it, will it present a, unless you wanna hear more planning testimony, Ernie, will it, will it have a negative impact on the zone plan or the zoning ordinance or impact on the neighborhood?
There will be no substantial detriment to the public good associated with the application. The applicant is proposing a permitted use that will provide significant improvements to the existing condition of the site. There will be substantial landscaping and buffers provided along both sides, and as a permitted use, it will not impair the purpose and intent of the zone plan.
Oh, and no parking in the driveway? No parking in the driveway area?
Do you mean to, that we should propose a sign?
Signage, signage with no parking in the driveway.
The applicant will add no sign, signage of no parking within the driveway.
Good.
That concludes Mr. Halpert's testimony.
Any, anything from the board for this gentleman?
Just, just real quick to make sure. So in the back, I see handicap parking spaces. I'm assuming then that the new entrance in the back will be handicapped accessible?
The entrance, the, there is an entrance that will be accessible. The first, the first floor is going to be accessible, yes.
Okay.
And we do have the architect here.
Anything else, Mr. Marzo?
Are you also testifying about the statement of operations that was?
Yes, he could.
Okay. And is there going to be, it looks like on the architectural plans, it says coffee room. Is there any kind of kitchen or anything that's gonna be part of this?
I let, I let the architect, is here, speak to that.
Okay. And could you just talk a little bit about what the statement of operations, just?
Yes.
Thank you.
Specifically, services will be held seven days a week, beginning at 7:15 a.m. and ending at 8:15 a.m. In the evening, 8:45 p.m. through 9:15 p.m. There may be in the future afternoon services from 2 p.m. to 2:15 p.m. Approximately 20 congregants attend the services during the week. 10 to 12 congregants arrive by car. A significant number of the congregants live on, in the neighborhood and do not arrive. This number remains fairly consistent across services. On the Sabbath, the services are a little later, a little bit lengthier, 8:45 a.m. until 11 a.m. The estimated 35 member families will walk to attend these services. Only walking is permitted on Shabbos. There is trash removal that is shown on the plan, and the applicant is going to maintain the proposed stormwater facilities.
And would there be any bar mitzvahs, bat mitzvahs?
No, there, no.
Is it currently being used as a shul?
We're told that it's, it was a single-family house. They were having services and it evolved into a more formal use, yes. That's why we're here.
Okay, thank you.
Been used as a shul for years. Anybody else? That's fine, thank you, sir.
Architect, architect.
Architect would be nice. Gotta look better.
And just to confirm, no weddings, no banquets, no?
No, nothing.
Okay. All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Yes, I do. All right, and we accept your credentials, go ahead. Nice.
State your name anyway, so the record's clear.
Natali Gutt, G-U-T.
Okay, Mr. Gut, you're the architect who prepared the floor plans basically for the application.
Correct.
Do we have those up, Anthony? Up the, and then the houses, I think we submitted the house to, the diagram of the home, so let's wait till they come up. But while we're waiting, there was a question about the kitchen. Why don't we deal with that?
Yeah, no kitchen, no, no bar mitzvahs or anything. There will be a coffee room, which will have like, for a kid, a shifted dining, will have like a warming, just to keep the food warm. No, no kitchen, no preparing kitchen.
And the other question is that there is a garage that's not reflected as being used. That's gonna be solely for storage.
That's storage, correct. The wall, the wall, the wall that's dividing that garage in half is for structural purposes. It used to be a house. Now it's a, maybe a synagogue, it's gonna be more loads, so that's just to break up the span, that's what that wall's about.
So the, the diagram in front of us is the home?
That's the home, the facade is not changing.
So the exterior of the home is not changing in any way?
Correct. I think we, we prepared a rendering for it. That's one of the exhibits.
Sheet four of the other, the second file, Anthony, it wouldn't be that one.
It's a separate exhibit, it's not in here.
Well, we could, that's okay. The floor plan itself, is that on this exhibit?
Yes.
Okay, so why don't we get to that?
That's, that's down one sheet.
Down one, Anthony.
Uh, let's skip it.
Maybe not.
Yeah, let's, you know, A4 would be. Okay, there we go. So the second floor is getting all cleaned out, all the rooms are coming out, and it will consist entirely of the synagogue, the size of stairs, the first floor, which is on the left side. So those rooms are getting converted. We have a coat room, and we have a coffee room, and we just have that garage that's gonna be used for storage. We have existing bathroom that's gonna remain, and we had a laundry room that used to be.
Oh, but things are load-bearing.
That bathroom is there, that's gonna stay. That used to be a laundry room and mechanicals. We're gonna wall off the mechanical area and get another handicap bathroom over there. That is a new door that's ungrade, that's accessible. That deck is there. Automatic sprinkler system will be provided for. Emergency lighting and exit signs will also be added. Existing construction type is 5B, and what we mean is 5B, and as stated, previously no proposed changes to the facade.
And will it be handicap accessible?
Well, the first floor will be. The second floor has, has two means of eagerness, but it will not be, a ramp is not required because the stairs are there and as per the rehab code, a ramp is not required.
But someone can get from the handicap stall to the first floor of the building?
Correct.
Through the accessible sidewalk.
Yeah, that's on grade level.
That's all we have of the architect.
Just one quick question. So the second floor, all the walls will be taken out, so it's one open space.
Correct.
Will there be any load issues, load-bearing issues?
So there, there used to be a ceiling there, that's also gonna be taken out. So those load-bearing walls were holding the ceiling. So once the ceiling goes out and the walls goes out, so it's just an issue of thrust from the rafters. So there's gonna be metal ties that are gonna, thin metal ties that are gonna go across every periodically, and that's gonna avoid the thrust issue.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Marzo? How old is the house?
I'm not sure, it's pretty old. I would say sixties, yeah, I would think.
And you're not gonna do any exterior?
I've been here since 1960, 1970, and that house was there before I got here.
And you're not, you're not planning on doing any exterior work?
It's not as nice as that building we saw before, but it's, it's not bad. Hey, all good. Looks clean and neat.
I think it's an asbestos front.
It's possible, we're not gonna start up with that.
I think it might be asbestos front. You might wanna, you might wanna do something about the front. It's really pretty awful, I thought was the word I'd use. Not tactful, but you know, it could use some renovation, modernizing. I know modernizing is your thing. So consider, it might need a little work.
You could, you could look into that. We could look into it, it's hard to.
You might wanna do that. I mean, this is your place of worship. You want it to look nice.
That is true.
And, and there'll be no parking on the front lawn. There are a ton of cars parked there every single day.
Well, they don't have all this.
Yes, well, we can't wait.
Yes.
It will be an improvement.
I agree. There's not that many, you know, congregants, and they're all gonna fit in the back easily.
It's a nice, it's a small congregation. I'm sure they'll be very happy there. They've been very happy there for quite the while.
Agreed.
Anything else? Mr. Heller?
That deck is on the second floor, right?
Correct.
Is that an existing deck? You building something new there?
That deck is there, yeah.
It's gonna be extended though, right? New portion of deck?
Correct, yeah.
I just have on the record, make sure that can support 87 congregants.
Yeah, it's, it's there, it will be extended, correct.
And support 87 congregants potentially as well?
Yeah, yeah, again, I wanna mention that also, besides that, while we spoke about in the garage, we're gonna be sistering all the joys because it's, it's, it's an old house and it was obviously a house 40 pounds per square foot. We're gonna make sure that it's able to accommodate the larger loads of 100 pounds per square foot needed for a house of worship, correct?
Thank you.
Any other questions, ladies, gentlemen?
Mr. Ray is next.
Mr. Ray, because we, because we're not getting our money's worth out of him tonight.
And he only, he didn't testify to the first one because he forgot the time of the meeting, right? You would've testified before.
I forgot, we started 6:30 now, I know.
You swear or affirm, tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, good.
John Ray, R-E-A, with McDonough and Ray, professional engineer. Again, I'll be very brief. Based on the size of the sanctuary area, the number of parking spaces that are being proposed, I did do a traffic statement. It's gonna generate a relatively minimal amount of traffic. There will be some congregants that will walk from the immediate neighborhood, so from a traffic perspective, it will be fairly minimal. The one thing I did want to address in a little bit more detail is in Mr. Peters' report on page five, item D1, traffic circulation and parking, there was an issue of whether Bethel Church Road is a residential street or a collector street. It is a classic collector street. It carries a significant volume of traffic. It extends to the east into Howell Township, terminates at a T intersection at Kent Road. I've done some traffic counts at that intersection. It's a collector roadway, and that's it.
That's the, that's an ordinance question, I think.
Yes.
Because I asked the same question.
It's a classic collector street.
Yes.
That concludes our entire presentation. Madam Chair, we're prepared to answer questions.
Our professionals have any comments on this project? Any board questions or comments on this project? Let's open it up to the public. If the public has any questions for the professionals, please come forward.
Seeing no one come forward, I close the cross-exam, cross-examination portion of this application. Sullivan?
Second, Bernstein. If anyone has any comments, general comments on this project, please feel free to come forward.
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public comment portion of this application. Sullivan?
Second, Bernstein.
Would you like to conclude, sir?
No, I believe it's a great project. I think that we've addressed everything that the professionals have raised in their reports and we requested the board grant the approvals.
I will seek a motion.
I think it's pretty cut and simple, and the house is there, and they're just reusing it, and probably used that way for how many years now? I make a motion to approve.
I second that motion, Sullivan, and, and add to it that it's good to see applications coming forward that address the issues that people have had. I like the fact that you've accounted for parking, that you're going to account for the upgrades to the building. We really do appreciate these kind of applications, and we thank you for coming forward.
And the motion to approve with the motions, I mean, with the variances.
With the variances.
With the variances, yes.
We'll take a roll call, please. Mr. Bresi?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Tremer?
Yes.
Mr. Weingart?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell? Yes, and congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all, have a great holiday.
Thank you.
Motion to close?
I'll take it. Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll see.